It is 7:02 on September the 6th, 2022. We want to welcome everyone out to the Highland City Council meeting tonight. Currently, we are missing one council member, being Councilmember Scott Smith. Hopefully, he will be able to join us here shortly. We will start with our invocation by Councilmember Sarah Peterson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Brittany Beals. Sarah?
Hail, dear Father in heaven! We are thankful to be able to meet together and live in a country where we can have freedoms and conversations, and we're thankful for our wonderful community and the people that live here. We're thankful for the opportunity to serve. We ask you to bless us that we might have open minds, that we might have civil discussions, and be able to have listening ears, and think about what is best for our community and residents. We are thankful for thy goodness and for all that thou hast given us, and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, and infinite, and just for all.
At this time, we have scheduled for public appearances. If there's anyone here that would like to come up and address the City Council on any item that is pertaining here in the city or other items, if you can keep your comments to three minutes. If there is anyone that'd like to come up, go ahead and come on up. Helena?
I'm Helena Park, Christmas. Good to s-
Helena, would you mind, is the mic on? Is the green button on? Okay.
Good to see the family here. I have two things on my mind. One, I called you about the intersection there that I said had come up and flooded into a pond, and then it would go down. Well, I went out there with a neighbor tonight, and there's, it's broken for all the, what do you call them? Where you open them to go down. They're broken around all of them. It looks like our whole intersection's going to go down at 33, 63, 30, and 6,400.
So just Helena, just so we can make sure, Andy, you're catching, this is your subject that goes up into the cemetery, correct? It's in the curve, I call it the Roberts Curve, kind of going up?
No, it's our curve, my curve.
Okay. Because I went past, I couldn't see anything, so if Andy with our public works, so.
Okay. It's, it looks like everything is broken around all those pipes, and it looks like it's just going to go one of these days. That was one thing, a little thing. However, with the road going down to Costco in such a mess, I saw something happen twice in the last week, where you go down, 124, down to Lehigh, to turn up and go to Smith's, down the steep. I went down there a couple of weeks ago, and there was a big accident on that corner. And the other day, I went down there, there were 12 of us lined up trying to turn left. There is no way to turn left safely, because everybody comes over that thing, and they just don't stop. And coming up, they can't stop. They need to put a temporary, at least temporary, sign there for the people coming from American Fork upward that intersection, because somebody's going to get killed over there. I did see the one big accident with the truck, and the 12 of us must have taken us 20 minutes to make a left turn. So that's something I think you need to take up at Lehigh, if you would. So, that's my graphics for tonight.
Is everyone where, what Helena's talking about, it's 10,400 going down to 12th East into Lehigh. Because we've closed down 6,800 West or half construction, it's pushing everyone down, 10,400 down to the 1200 East intersection, and it comes up out of the gully, and it has a little hill, and that little T-intersection's a fairly unsafe to be able to look and seize what you're, that's the intersection you're talking about, correct?
Very unsafe. So, and no one can make a left turn, so they're taking chances, so.
Okay, thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to come up and address the City Council? Seeing none at this time, we'll go ahead and we'll close our unscheduled public appearances and move on. We have three different presentations. We have one from our youth council. I don't see anyone here.
I don't either, Mayor. Let's go ahead and just hold off on that one and see if someone comes.
Okay. We'll now move on to our water update. I think, Tason, you have the water update.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I just got a short one for you today. I didn't put a bunch of slides about the American Fork Canyon on this time, because it's basically not doing anything, so. Okay. You're fine. I'll just stand here.
Now, Tason, when you say it's not doing anything, does that mean that the flow is?
Yeah, the flow has gone down dramatically. It's still producing a little bit of water. As far as flow, we're getting about six CFS. One CFS is equal to 450 gallons per minute, so if you want to do some math there, you can figure that out, but throughout the season, it's been a lot better. So now, we're drawing in most of our water from the Provo Canyon, and we've got one well running at the moment. But that's pretty much how the season's going to finish out, is mostly from Provo River and our wells.
Sorry, we seem to have some version issues. We've lost some slides from our presentation that we previously prepared, so we apologize.
Okay.
There it is. So this is a slide I have up every time. This just shows the usage throughout the city. Can't see the numbers very well, but the top line, it's kind of blue. That's from 2020. The middle line's 2021, and the bottom line is this year. And there's been a pretty good decrease in usage, which is great. And then, just another way to look at it, there's the bar graphs along the bottom. The far left is 2020, 2021, and then 22 on the right. And on the next slide, it'll say that is a 10% decrease over last year and a 24% decrease over 2020. So again, that, we owe a big thanks to the residents for listening to the conservation efforts, and also to Parks Department churches and school district as well. Like I said, the American Fork River has declined mostly through the month of August. It lasted a lot longer than we expected it to this year, so that was a huge help, along with the rainstorms and going in to the rest of the season, we're pretty much going to be using the Provo River, and those numbers are a little bit confusing, but basically what they're saying is, we were allocated, you know, just over 3,000 acre feet, and if we continue our efforts of conservation, by the end of the season, we'll have about 1,200 acre feet of holdover for next year. That's a little savings account that we can add to next year's allocation, being as where we don't know the outcome of this winter, and how dry next year's going to be. Hopefully, it's really good, but it could be another year like this one. We definitely want to have that little savings account that we can draw from next year. And then, just some public awareness, we do kind of want to let them know that we're trying to save as much of that storage water as possible. So some of our updates will include, I know it's really hot right now, it's 100 degrees, but going into next week, it should start to cool down, and hopefully, it continues to cool down after that. With the cool weather coming, we ask that people decrease their times by anywhere from 30 to 50%, whatever you can get away with, and keep your lawns green. But, yeah, we just continue to keep letting the residents know through newsletter, websites, texts and emails, and social media, and hopefully, we can continue this year as we've done already, and be able to have some water at the end of it for next year. Any questions for me?
No, well, thank you. I guess there was one question. How do we plan, like you mentioned, next week, it appears the temperatures are going to start to come down. Is there any public awareness or messaging we're going to be having to try to say, hey, because it's starting to cool now, pull back your summer watering times and adjust your clocks by 50%? Is there, how we could get that message out?
So we, last year, we found that one of our, that our quicker response came from our actual social media and text outreach, and so we had talked about that, and we thought, honestly, we'd be a little sooner than we are with 100-degree weather we've all had the last 10 days or whatever it's been, you know, it's held us off a little bit, but we talked about, once it begins to crest off and the temperatures are clearly heading into fall, that we'd send the text to the residents and say, you know, hey, we're heading into cooler weather, no need to keep watering like it's, you know, summer, in a nice way.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, thank you very much, Tason.
Thank you.
Our next presentation we have is we have a grant lobbyist consultant, David Stewart, that we'd like to maybe have him just come up, and this is for the council to kind of ask questions about what type of service Dave could provide, or what a consultant can help with the city. Maybe he can give a little bit of information and background, how that kind of works.
Certainly, Mayor. Happy to do that. I, so you know, David Stewart, I actually happen to live in Highland, just off of 6,000 as well, so they call this my home. And I do work at the state level, at the state legislature, and one of the niches I've kind of focused on, and I have several clients in, is local governments. One of my clients is MAG, the Mountain Land Association of Governments, that you guys are obviously a member, and manage a lot of things, including transportation for local roads and other things, and some of the appropriations there and the quarters and stuff. And I work with them and do a lot of stuff at the state level to seek appropriations for transportation and meals on wheels and other things like that. Gentleman Sean Seager, you may or may not know, worked there and just recently retired, and introduced me to Andy and the mayor, because one of the specialties that I do, like I said, is in local government, in that about a year and a half ago, I helped create a fund. It was a $50 million ARPA local matching grant fund. And the idea was, it was state dollars that were, ARPA federal dollars came to the state, and the idea was, let's take these, this $50 million and look to local governments to match against some of their, some of their ARPA dollars. The fear at the legislature was that a lot of the ARPA money would be plowed just into more general budgets versus really investing into capital and other things and do some of those, and so this was to try incentivize more of a capital-type investment. So we put together that fund. My understanding, talking to, I met with Andy and the mayor, is Highland decided and didn't actually submit an application, but supported the Tempanogus Special Service District in their application. Ultimately, Tempanogus wasn't successful. There were, in the end, for that 50 million, there were over, a little over a billion dollars worth of projects that were proposed to the state to match against 50 million. And about, I think it was about 650, almost 700 applicants. Ultimately, they were matched up. There was about 35 that were awarded. At that time, I represented a handful of local governments, and all of those I represented were successful in getting that, just, and part of what I do is, like, I help set up the program and then work through, pick the right projects that can be successful, help to, you know, shape the grant and then work the grant through the process. And whereas, a lot of people, you know, in cities, and you know, your guys' main focus and your staff is keeping everything working here and dealing with everything that's going on here, let alone try to babysit and manage that process specifically on this grant program. Fast forward a year, this last legislative session, because of that, we were able to put another 25 million into that fund, and there will be in two weeks. That grant program will go live again to spend that 25 million. They will seek again applications. And I met with the mayor, Andy, there was a couple of projects, certainly what they're, and it's narrowed down to, there's only two types of projects they're looking to do. One is affordable housing, and the other is water. Predominantly, they're going to be all water applications, and water meaning sewer, can also be drinking water, but those types of projects, water tanks, you know, wells and things like that. And so, what, and some of the parameters of the fund that they're putting in is anybody that got money in the 50 million, obviously, is not allow, or is not going to get money from this, they're not going to do somebody twice. There's a cap. Last time, there wasn't a cap. This time, they're going to cap it at a million dollars for awards, so that there'll be 25 anticipated, the cap becomes the floor, so everybody will apply for, and, you know, at least a million dollars. They're looking to, at a minimum, a one-to-one match, so if you're looking for a million dollars, it needs to be a $2 million program that the city would put up. Anything above that is certainly good as well, but it's not necessary to show, you know, you get too big, and so you propose a project that's $100 million, and you need that one, you know, your likelihood of success isn't very high, because they're like, well, get another million bucks if you've got 100 million, or 99 to do the rest of the project. So there's a bit of a sweet spot there. But yeah, that's kind of, you know, one of the things, I guess I do in meeting, you know, I think the mayor thought there might be some interest, you know, again, a bit of a shorter timeframe as it's coming up, and that's kind of, and part of that also, if, you know, if the city were to move forward, what I proposed to the mayor as well, and Andy, was a year contract that would work on this in the short term, and this will get resolved in the next couple of months, and then, but through that year, would work through next legislative session on any other policy-type issues and things that the city has of interest, as well as there are other grants, other opportunities, potential transportation, other things would work with the city. I mean, certainly, my, you know, full disclosure, my intent would be to show the value to, you know, if hired by the city would be to show that value of, hey, this was a no-brainer, we got a great ROI, and let's, you know, do this again. So my incentive is to do everything I can to be successful for the city and to show that, you know, that, again, can bring a great ROI. I have been in this world of consulting lobbying for 22 years. I actually took over this firm from my grandparents, of all people. They were in politics forever and ever, and so the firm's actually been around for over 38 years, and represent a handful of cities, and to date, I think the longest one I've now represented is 17 years. I've never lost a city client, I've never been, for lack of success or anything else, and so have a great track record there. And again, one of the key things, you know, because this is always, you know, I know, difficult, especially when a city hasn't looked at that before, is because I do work for MAG, that is my, one of my primary clients, and certainly, if I didn't have the confidence that I could be successful, what I've kind of pitched is, I wouldn't bring it, because I have no desire to jeopardize my relationship with MAG, and I believe that offers me credibility, and it's been a great partnership with them, and the last thing I want to do to jeopardize what they provide me and the success I've had for them. So I think that, hopefully, a quick overview, Mayor, if there's anything I left out or any questions.
So council, what is being, you know, what Dave has mentioned is that his fee would be $100,000 for one year. It can be billed in a one-month increment. He would be a consultant lobbyist for us with the state legislators, with water grants, with, help us with other grants, that that is what his specialty is. You know, like I said, to be successful, usually, they need to bring in more money than what the city pays out. What was earmarked when we met with Dave and Andy and myself was, we have our wellhouse that we just, you know, did the new well- If they say, hey, in the utility studies for that city, it appears they will have funds at some time to be able to do this project, does that move it down the list, or how does that get ranked? Do you know what I mean? If we have our impact feasting, hey, at some time, we're going to be able to do this project based off of our fees collected, how does that rate in the process?
Great question. At the end of the day, it doesn't have an impact, just because whether it be this project, any project, any water project that's proposed ultimately, the, you know, is going to have to happen at a city, for the most, I mean, there might be a few, but the majority of them are going to happen, and so either it's going to be paid through impact fees, through rate increases, or whatever that may be, and the state recognizes this, what this allows, obviously, is communities like yourselves, to then shift that to some other project. And so, it doesn't hurt that this would be, you know, potentially covered, you know, through your normal process. They certainly understand that what they're doing is creating, you know, what they're looking for, because it's ARPA dollars, it has to be spent, the dates keep changing, in 2026, basically, so they're looking for more shovel-ready in projects. And so, the reality is, most of those projects, I guess it takes a long lead time, are already in the queue and have already likely identified funding. What the idea here was, is to help mitigate some of that for local governments, that they could then spread those resources to other critical projects and start to move those up the queue as well. So it wouldn't have a negative connotation about, because you're in the same boat as basically every other applicant.
So as you look at each of the applicants, this is where, I guess, when I met with you, my question, okay, we now have, you mentioned on the last finding, there were 600 applicants. So let's assume now it's down to 100. We have 100 applicants. How does having a consultant help us? Because all 100 look the same.
Sure.
We all two have a well that needs to be done, or a wellhouse. How does the consultant help us look different than the rest? I'm like, what's the magic that a consultant helps the city with?
Certainly. What I help is to talk through and make sure that it is a good project, that there is, you know, that it's something that will rank through their criteria, rank well. Like I say, in this one in particular, I helped develop this. I've been working with the staff and working through the parameters and the stipulations that they're going through to actually execute this program, and so the relationships there as well as, and the last go-around, what it was is, and you made a great point, everybody looks the exact same on the piece of paper. What I bring is the ability to make it stand out, and that's basically through my relationships and knowing who and how to talk to, and how to advance the project. And part of the reason is, again, why I was able to, everyone I represented last time got money, and I'm confident this time as well, is, again, because I'm in this for the long haul, not trying to just make a quick buck on a one project, is I only take a handful, because I can help a handful get, you know, if I tried to go out and say, let me sign up 25 cities, and I'm going to go spend all, you know, I can't do that. I can go in with the relationships and understanding and work through and fund a handful of them, you know, three, four, five, you know, at most, and so in taking that approach has been, you know, kind of, in moderating that is, again, the success, but yeah, you kind of hit it on the head. The ultimate value is basically getting this project to stand out compared to everything else, because they're all qualified, they're all good, they're all, you know, there's not, I mean, there's probably a handful that don't make sense, but everything else needs to be done and is critical to any local jurisdiction, so it's not like there's, you know, it's not, what was interesting is, when they did all the rankings and everything else, what you ultimately had is, you had a couple outliers that, for whatever reason, ranked really, really high. You had a few that didn't rank very well, and a few that just didn't qualify, because it wasn't qualified for ARPA dollars, and everybody else was within like, you know, 5, 5-10 percentage, but they were just all right there. And so there's, this tells you, there's no differentiation on the metrics and on the scoring a lot of times, and so it's just getting one to, and again, part of that's just working through the, and understanding the process versus just submitting it, hitting submit, and then sitting and waiting for it to come back and see if you got it or not.
I have a couple of questions. So, do you actively look for grants outside of state or federal grants?
No, and not really so much. My focus and my relationships and understanding are going to be at the state level, so not really so much at the federal level, yeah, just really at the state. The state legislature then, as well as in the executive branch and the different departments that are funded, and that's where the grants ultimately run through.
Okay. And then you mentioned an ROI. What is your average ROI for the cities? And is that year-over-year ROI, or is that a one-time ROI? What does that look like?
You know, that's a great question. I haven't, I guess, really thought about that way. It depends, one example, I got hired by Brigham City now, I think it's been three years, and the problem they had is, they had a street called Forest Street, if any of you happen to be familiar with Brigham City, and Union Pacific will stage their trains, and it blocks this street that cuts their city in half, and they'll do it for hours, you know, half a day, even a day, and so it's just been a huge, and something they fought with Union Pacific forever and ever to try and solve. I got hired and came up with a strategy and a solution of how to address, and ultimately, we essentially assessed a fuel tax upon Union Pacific that generated a revenue stream that the state bonded against, and gave $30 million to Highland to build this bridge over the railroad shack to connect to the freeway and everything else. And so, in that instance, they paid me candidly $120,000, and they got $30 million, so I don't know the rough numbers, I mean, that's one extreme. Other city clients that I've worked for, for years and years, it's, it's, you know, compared to my fee, it's, you know, 10, 20, 100, it's, just because you deal in such large numbers year-over-year, and, you know, one large project like that, you know, this last year, I helped Brigham City get, there was a rural grant program, and I helped them get, just barely got awarded this end of last week, $600,000 for a rural grant program that only applied to certain cities and certain counties, so those are a couple, you know, and I go through, I do some work for Salt Lake City, and so, you know, one of my niches is also infrastructure and transportation, and so, and we're representing MAG. Last year, I helped get discretionary money of $150 million to MAG, and that was two years ago, and this last year was $120 million for different projects, and that benefits, obviously, including you guys, everybody else, because that just starts moving projects, you know, funding moves everybody up the list, other local projects, and so, but yeah, it's 10, 20, 50, 100 times generally.
Then the other question is, you said you represent several cities. So how do you avoid conflicts of interest? How do you decide, which city am I going to work the hardest for, or, I mean, I mean, maybe that's not a fair representation, but-
No, and I certainly get that perception and perspective, so, you know, it's not a simple, I guess the simplest way to answer that is, among the local government cities specifically that I do work for, that kind of ranges all over the place, so I do some work for, like I said, Salt Lake City and Park City. I do, most of the cities I do work for in Salt Lake City, my main focus there is, there's a local, up in Salt Lake City, there are quarter cent authorizations, they're statewide, but in Salt Lake County, the way they impose them, the legislature captured what they call a quarter of a quarter, so they held back part of it, and the state legislature identifies and picks projects they want funded with that money. But since that money's a Salt Lake County local tax, that can only be spent on cities in Salt Lake County. So to your question, what, for Salt Lake City, for instance, my, there's, there's five of me that work for the city. My role is largely the airport, so I deal with issues regarding Salt Lake City, International Airport that's owned and managed by the city. So this type of stuff isn't something that Salt Lake City, I work on for them. And then the other cities in Salt Lake are ones that I pursue that fund that's specific to Salt Lake County, so again, anything outside of Salt Lake County, not a conflict. Park City's one I do work for. The only thing I really do for Park City that I was hired specifically in my scope is tourism taxes. They have unique taxes, unique things, because they, unlike you, don't have the benefit of a Republican representative or senator, and so they're kind of, at times, you know, from the outside looking in. So, in trying to answer your question, what it boils down to is, and that's why I only take on a handful, and it's specific to, last go-around, all the cities that I represented that had interest in, that asked me and wanted me to work on that, I worked on and got them money. They now can't apply again for this new round, and so that's why I've gone out to some new cities and said, look, I've got the capacity and the ability to do this, I don't have a conflict with it. And so, as, as I look through that, and like I mentioned earlier, a rural grant program for Brigham City, so I'm always looking for different opportunities and working with staff and with elected officials to say, hey, what are your needs, what are, you know, and putting together then a package, it's like, again, as I developed this originally, the 50 million, now the 25 million, it's like, I didn't just go for one city and say, I'm going to try and get them $50 million. I said, look, let me put together a program that either, everybody I represent is going to win, or if it's not going to work, nobody will, because we weren't able to get the money. And so, what I found is effective is, is I'm able to package those together, and probably the easiest way to answer that is, is conflicts are huge to me. In 38 years, we've never had to actually drop a client because of a conflict, we've been able to always work through it, and as I said, I've never lost a city client that ever said, hey, you're, you're taking care of this other city, and you're not taking care of me. And so, in the end, part of the key is just working through and understanding, here, here's the fee, here's what you want me to work on, and whatever that is, I will deliver on that and work, you know, because again, my incentive is, I get, I'm as good as my, you know, last success, and so it's continually trying to be successful for those clients so that, and they look back on us, like, look, this was perfect, and, or this was great for us, a win, and let's continue and do that. So that's kind of how, I mean, I get from the outside, like you say, I've just never been put in a position of, okay, well- been put in a position of, okay, well, you can fund two out of the three, or you can do this or that. It's, that's just never happened so far. And not that I ever couldn't, but that's why I work hard to never be put in that position.
So I have one question that I've been thinking about here. You talked with the 50 million that was approved last year, and now we're vying for 25 million. One thing you said is that the cities, if they had a project, would have to give matching funds.
Yes.
So our city runs on a pretty tight budget. We're scrambling right now to put money together to build a park that we've been trying to build for, I think, 17 years. So my question becomes, what if, is in the thinking, to grant the grant, does the city have to prove right at that point that they have a million dollars to, do you see what I'm saying?
I understand the question, yeah.
Because, you know, I'm not sure where we'd get a million dollars or 500,000. I think our staff's pretty good about finding money, but at the same time, I just don't know what we could apply for and make sure we had matching grant funds. Is that, so do they award that basing, based on if you have the matching funds available?
Well, yeah, well, I think to the question, I may defer to Andy. As we talk, the idea, I think, and what's envisioned here would be a project that you already have queued up, that is, has, if not full funding, enough funding, that you're close enough. And so what, let's say, for instance, there's a project out there for two and a half million dollars, and I don't remember off the top of my head, whatever your well was, but it's a project. What would be anticipated is that the city has either program for, or money for, allocated over the next year or two to fund that. What this would do is you would then, as part of the application submit, and say, we have a project, it's two and a half million dollars, we're seeking the full, you know, million-dollar capped-out match. As a city, we plan to bring a million and a half to finish that out. And when, you know, and again, the biggest, the only timeframe that you're really held to is it has to be spent by 2026. And so to your question, if you were to go just pick some brand-new thing that you have no funding and you're not confident, ultimately, you will need to execute and live up to and fund that. But my understanding is, and what you would want to do, is pick a project that is already coming up the queue and is funded, or pretty much funded, and then this would just slide in and free up money to move to a different project and accelerate that, if that makes sense. But yeah, ultimately, the city would need to, when the project is executed, would need to come up with and have the money to match. But I'm fairly confident you should have that for what we, what we talked about anyway.
So Andy, what are some projects that you see that could be applicable here?
So we suggested three projects. There are, two of the three-year projects that we already applied for, the Utah County Grant. And Utah County Grant, if you, you may or may not remember, Utah County took some of their ARPA money and said, okay, we want to, you know, give the cities a chance. And so we tossed our hat in the rink, and very similar, similar to the experience that Dave had last year with the $50 million grant, the county had, you know, this many requests and this much funding. Two of the three projects that we've talked with Dave about is finishing our wellhouse for well number four. So the city's already just barely spent a million and a half dollars drilling the well. And we had been hopeful that that would, when we applied for the county, the million and a half dollars we just spent would count as our match. Additionally, we applied for assistance from the county to remediate our well number five, and also help us finish our chlorination project so that we can chlorinate our water and treat our water, you know, help control any bacteria that might get in our water system. So those are projects that we have, quote-unquote, off the shelf. They're projects that we submitted to county, and we did not receive the funding, because we were kind of in that, quote-unquote, qualified middle area that, you know, Dave described. Good projects, but just like everybody else's. The third project that we actually suggested was, if you recall, when we awarded the Country Club Sewer, we had to cut back the project because we were short on funds. And so again, we thought, well, we could apply for the last third of that project, which was about a million dollars, with the hope that the dollars that we're spending now could count as our match for that. So those were the three that we felt like we had shovel-ready and fit the criteria for what's coming up.
Is there any money out there for parks? Do you do any of that to finish out parks?
Yeah, parks.
All abilities.
What's that?
An all-abilities park.
Yeah. Parks tend to be a little bit difficult in, that the state has their own parks that they fund and take care of. And so they tend, as far as parks go, they, historically, I haven't seen a lot. One of the things, and one of the things that I would suggest that we explore, though, is trails. They do do a fair amount of trails. And there are some very active programs there that can be petitioned. So that seems to be a little bit more active transportation and those types of things that they, and it's really, you know, they've always had some of it, but in the last year or so, they've put significant resources to active transportation, trails, biking, hiking, and all those types, and all the, and all the above. But as it relates to actual parks, it's kind of, it's a little bit like, there was a senator this last year that proposed an appropriation request for pickleball courts. And that candidly became kind of the joke at the legislature, because it was like, yeah, we're not going to fund pickle, that's a, and their kind of thing was, that's like a park for a local, you know, if that's something that a city or a county or a couple cities want to pool together and build like they would a park, then build a pickleball part of your park. Versus, the state gets hesitant about reaching into, because once they dip their toe into that, then all of a sudden, well, if you did that park, we, you know. And so, yeah, parks are hard, but trails would be something that certainly we could look at, look at.
I have another question, just about the fee, apparently 100,000 a year. Do you ever contract on a project base? If we just want to go after one specific grant, do you ever contract for that one project, that one grant? And I am a little concerned, because there's a lot of grants outside of state, but we would be paying only for those grants inside of the state.
Yeah, so what, this, so I'll answer your question. One, because sometimes the other question is, so with state law, I can't do anything on contingency base or success. So I can't come in and say, hey, if I get you X, whatever dollars, you pay me a percent of that. That's illegal.
So no clause if we're unsuccessful?
Yeah, yeah. So that, so the fear is that, you know, obviously, if you have that, that, you know, I would do things that I wouldn't normally do and do illegal things, because I have this huge, you know, carrot hanging out there. So everything has to be fixed, it's a fixed fee negotiated for that. What, what I proposed was specific to this million-dollar grant, you know, my idea being a return of 10 to 1 of an RI. What I kind of threw in as well is said, look, because of that, and I get it's, you know, a lot of times for a city, especially that hasn't used a lobbyist before, it might be difficult. And so I says, look, I'll, I'll sign a year contract and work through the session, kind of, if you will, almost, it sounds stupid to say, not pro bono, but in addition to, and not charge, you know, here's the fee for the grant now, you know, if you want me to keep working, it's another fee. And so at times, it's project-based, but what, what I've usually found is, I'll focus in on a project, and then usually, because that project can take any amount of time inside of a year, I usually would then propose, look, let's just be under contract for a year, work through a scope arrangement of, okay, you're working on this, this, and this, and that's, you know, as long as both of us feel that that's fair for what I'm doing, then that's what I would do. And that's kind of how I approach it. So yeah, it is, can be project-based, but it usually expands beyond that, because for me, it's, it's easier if I'm already, what I'd like to do, and that's why I kind of candidly threw on more, is what I'd like to be able to show is, look, here I was able to deliver this grant, and now there's other things I've delivered, so next year when it comes around, it's easy for, easier for me to make the pitch, say, look, we got the grant, we got this, and we're working on this, and so, you know, we ought to look at continuing the relationship.
So you, are you saying there's an exit clause in the, your contract?
It would just be a one-year, and then at that point, you know, if both parties agree, you could always extend it, but yeah, there's no.
But no exits during the year?
No, it would be a fixed negotiated.
And then in the contract, could we specify other cities that would be looking for similar things that we would want you to not also work for?
Yeah, we can certainly talk through what, you know, we can put anything in, obviously, in the contract. I mean, it, if there's a specific concern about, you know, different cities or things like that, then we could certainly talk about that. But again, I, that's not, I guess, I get your, maybe potential concern, that's not something I'm concerned, you know, concerned with. But again, I've never run into that being a problem. But there's certainly some cities that would, you know, see there's a, I guess, a sister city or somebody that's very similar, and that they would see there'd be constantly things, and that's certainly something we, we could talk through and explore as well.
Is there any other questions at all for Dave? Is there, counsel, we need kind of a recommendation. Now, talking with Rob, you know, because there's two ways if we were interested in moving forward. One is, MAG is offered, Mountain Mine Association Government has done an RFP, and already has an agreement with Dave Stewart on that. But we also, Rob, you mentioned, because this is a contract work, the city could enter into an agreement with, as a contract. Is that correct? This is a separate contract?
Yes, I don't see any reason why we would not, unless the.
Yeah, and so to your mayor to explain it, so what in, what has happened in a couple different cities, some cities have their own rules, and there's no state rule, but some cities have passed an ordinance that says, anything over a certain amount, you have to do a certain RFP, and that would take beyond the date of this grant. So that would work, sounds like, I don't think Highland has that. So that would be one avenue. Another thing, like I say, MAG is offered, and I've used it before, to say, look, you have a relationship with MAG, you guys have a contract with MAG, MAG has done an RFP with me, and so they have selected me through a competitive RFP process. So you can amend your relationship and essentially pay MAG, MAG amends my scope document relative to them. For me, it makes no difference. It's a total back, you know, the, however, it's either direct or through them. Either way, the representation I would give Highland would be the exact same, I'd register for you and only report to you. All MAG is, is they offer it just as, you know, again, since I've had such a great relationship with them, they, they have confidence of, you know, reaching out to them, remember, saying, look, if this makes it easier for you, you don't have to do as much paperwork, it's great, we don't care one way or another. But that's really, it's really two avenues, and it's up to the city if they want to move forward either one, doesn't matter to me either way.
And to follow up on that, back to that issue, the city does have a normal RFP requirement. It is, and, you know, go out to bid, get solicitations, it is waived under the city's purchasing policy and code for professional consultants and contractors, which include legal, engineering, or others who have kind of a technical expertise, which is why I said, if the city wanted, we could do that directly under that kind of exception to our RFP process.
Now, in order to do that, we'd have to have that come back as a formal approval process, or is that, where is that process done at?
Oh, you would just, I mean, we'd execute a contract, and the council would have to approve the contract.
So I mean, that still would need to be on a vote to be able to do that.
Correct.
So counsel, I need input. Would you like to move forward to have that come forward on a future date here, the counsel? Is there further discussion? What would be the recommendation of the counsel?
I would, oh, go ahead, Scott.
No, go ahead.
I would like to think about it, discuss it more. I'm wondering, this is the first I've heard about it, so is there someone with, with grant writing skills with a broader scope? That could do federal and arts and, and those kind of things? I'm interested in where the budget's coming from, since this wasn't in our budget item. And, and then I know you've had a lot of years, so I don't mean this to be insulting, but what if we sent, you know, what would it cost us to send someone internally to a grants writing course, so we have that knowledge internally for a long period of time? So there's just some questions in my mind. I mean, I'd love to get some more grants.
So here, that was kind of, so as we look at the one, and sometimes when I've talked with a couple other cities, asking about when they've hired out, you know, a consultant, they said, recommend if you're going to hire someone, that you have a specific purpose why you're doing it. It's not just general, but you have a specific item that you're focused in on. We happen to have one that are, you know, here, we, our engineering has said, hey, this is one, unfortunately, the date, I think, is September 15th when it's due to have it go in, is that?
It's going, September 20th.
September 20th.
Two weeks from today.
So we, we have a deadline where it's supposed to, if we're, and now that's just one project, we always can wait for, we always seem to always have a lot of different projects. It just happened to be, we have this project, we know the funding that's coming up, and we know that appears that we should meet within the sweet spot of that project. That was a little bit why it came up here two weeks ago. But if we want to do more consideration on it and not, you know, I just, I'm not trying to put, because like you said, we haven't had a lot of time, the question comes, what budget has come from? Because I think, you know, I mentioned this, and this could be for Rob, or that, we can't, this can't come out of the, an enterprise account to pay for a consultant, can it? Like, we can't pull it out of our, our PI enterprise account to pay a consultant.
If I'm working on a, well, for other cities I've represented, they have used money out of enterprise, like an RDA, their water. And if you're working on a specific area of focus that, that is in that area, the other, and I don't, internally, if they had something, but they were able to pay for at least a portion of, Salt Lake City was the example. I did a bunch of broader stuff before, they hired more, and just put me over airports specifically. But I had, my contract was broken into three different pieces. The airport paid a piece, the RDA P to P, or four pieces, actually, RDA, the general fund, and the, their water department all paid part of the contract, because, but I was doing everything. Now, only the airport pays my fee, because all I work on is airport stuff. And so at least they were able to do it. I don't know if there's anything different for Highland.
So it's, it's not, you know, it wasn't budgeted into as part of the rate studies we've done, but, you know, if the projects were having go lobby or try to acquire for the city, you know, get funding for, come out of, you know, it is a specific, we're only doing water projects or water and sewer, then yes, we can. It's along the lines of, you could pay an engineer to do some design work for those types of things.
So just coming back, counsel, what would be your input? You know, Sarah, you mentioned you'd like to maybe have a little bit more time. I agree, it's the first time, if that's the case, we'll probably miss this one project that's coming up on September 20th, but that's okay, there'll be others, and we can, then, you know, get back with Dave if that's what. One thing I'd look at as a consultant, there's going to be a lot of consultants out there. You're hiring a specialist that has special relationships, has special knowledge, so this is very unique, and that, I understand, we could go out there and say, hey, there's going to be grant writers, but you want to, you really want a professional, it's like, you, this, this is our heart surgeon for grants. Does that make sense? And so we're trying to be very specialized.
I just don't want to hire the first heart surgeon I meet.
You don't want what?
I just don't want to hire the first heart surgeon I meet.
And that's what I understand, just so you do understand, I'm not here saying, I'm not a grant writer. What I have is the relationships to execute and the track, and to me, the, the history to do it. And yeah, if this is not something, then that's fine. Honestly, this was, I have another city lined up that's, this is honestly not, I just happen to live here, and so I wanted to, it was like, oh, and I'd met with the mayor, and there was another council meeting for a couple of weeks, and so I held off. So for me, it's no, I've got somebody else, so it's not going to hurt my feelings, it's just, this is, you know, the opportunity.
Let's get the rest of the council.
I'm sorry, I'm being a little bit hard on you, but.
No, no, let's get the, what's the rest of the council feel?
I think we've actually talked about this for the past month and a half or so. So we've, in conversations, and I've done a little bit of research on you and, and reached out to a few other of my networks, and so I'm fine with hiring him. I've heard good results from your company. My networks know you as well, so I'm fine. And I think it'd be beneficial to our city to go ahead with it.
Okay, what's the rest of the council feeling?
Mr. Mayor. I think it is worth pursuing, because there is so much competition for these types of grants. And I think the most important thing isn't the ability to compose and to use proper grammar in making one of these grants, but rather, the more important aspect is the relationships. So I would have to agree with him on that, so.
So what you're saying, you're in favor of maybe moving forward with the one that would come due on September 20th? And trying to do something to get that put together?
Yes, but then also entertain kind of a larger relationship.
I'm not ready to spend $100,000 tonight. To me, that's a lot, and I, I'm not saying no. I'm just saying I would like to think about it more.
I'm really impressed with your expertise, and this all makes logical sense to me. I guess the one question I have is the 25 million that's up for grants, you have to have all the applications in by the 20th of September. Is that what I'm hearing? Am I understanding that correctly?
That's when it first opens, and what it, in order to candidly be successful, there's some pre-work that needs to be done before it opens, and to kind of get, again, coming back to the, what's not on the paper, back to the relationships that Councilman Ball raised. And so, yeah, it starts, it starts then how long it would be open if they're going to do, you know, sometimes some of these grants, they've done a first, you know, if you get in, you know, earlier versus later, you know, you score better, you know, type of the thing. So what I can't speak to is how long it would be open. That's when it does open. And they're still putting together the final parameters of the program.
So there's a lot of things I like about this. I like the fact that you live in Highland. Obviously, you've had tremendous success rate. I'm, I like the idea that MAG has worked with you and got a good ROI. I guess my only concern is, is it seems like we're kind of starting late for the 25 million grant process. What other grants are you anticipating are going to happen? I mean, there was 50 last year. You were successful with that. 25 now, we're kind of hitting a late start here for us, because we've got to prove this as a council and a vote. If we're spending $100,000, I would assume it has to be an agenda item to vote on. So do you anticipate some more big grants coming from the state legislature?
Well, so again, and part of, I think, part of candidly, the, I guess, the upside is, like they were last year, there is a huge surplus coming into this year. I mean, I, my guess is you've seen it somewhat in your sales tax, but specifically at the state level income tax and things, there's over a billion dollars of surplus. So this next year, there will be more, you know, and looking for more infrastructure. There's a renewed focus on water infrastructure, road infrastructure. And so there will be, you know, additional programs. As far as, you know, the way most of these grants work is the legislature appropriates money, and then it goes through the department, the department opens grants. I'm not aware, I mean, trails would be one to work on. That one's a perennial program that's always getting funded. A lot of these other grant-type programs are more one-offs, or just it was something that was capturing, you know, ARPA dollars, since there's not going to be another, likely, hopefully, another huge infusion from the federal government. Then the likelihood of another one of this type of grant is probably not going to happen. But not say there wouldn't be potentially others. But there's quite a bit of additional money. So I guess as part of, you know, the larger relationship that Councilman Ball recommends is, there will be, I think, additional opportunities this next session, just because we still, there is quite a bit of money there to be spent on things.
So with these big spending bills that have been passed at a federal level, infrastructure and, and, you know, all these climate change bills and all these other things, you don't anticipate there'll be any grants to states and cities to kind of implement some of that, or?
So most all of that stuff, I mean, we're on somewhat the tail end of that. And, you know, barring a huge slowdown, I don't know that I see the same, you know, there's been a, it seems like more of a hesitancy and a lack of support, especially candidly, if the Republicans take you to the House or Senate, I don't think there'll be huge, you know, trillion-dollar additional programs.
But you don't anticipate anything that things have just been passed in the last month or two?
Well, the last month, the last month, you're talking about the, whatever they call it, I can't remember the federal name, but about a half a billion dollars of the, or half a trillion, five hundred million.
Right.
That one was, is more specific and was more earmarked for different things, for some transit, for some clean air and some other things. But as far as that then coming in, you know, the reason why these grants were unique is just it was, for the most part, was very broad-based, is just basically just pumping money into local communities to try and help stop the bleeding. And so I don't think there's that quite of a wide-open approach. There might be something very unique, but Utah doesn't tend to do as well in those ones. We don't politically line up with the powers that be in DC. And so we're, when they're passing those programs, they're not really looking at Utah's, how do we help Utah? And so we get formulaic little pieces, but that will, as far as trickle down to the likelihood of cities and counties, I would be surprised that very much of it would.
Well, you know, I guess kind of a conclusion, because I don't want to take any more of your time, but I'm really intrigued with the idea of having you being a lobby for us. My only apprehension is, is that it seems like we're starting a little bit behind to get this done, and that there might not be any other grants, but then we kind of guarantee $100,000 for you, but we're too late. You see what I'm a little bit apprehensive?
No, I certainly understand. And honestly, since I didn't personally have a relationship, you know, it's hard enough to roll in and say, hey, look at me, I've got the shiny suit, you know, used car salesman, let me, if I got a deal for you. And honestly, what it was, is it was the relationship with Sean Seager. And as he left, he said, hey, I know Andy, I know the mayor, let me reach out and set up a meeting and have you, because he says, I've seen it. And so that was the biggest reason why, and like I say, I'm kind of down to my last city, if you will, that could help on this, why it took as long as it was. I just honestly never thought to come in and pitch it, just because I didn't have a relationship candidly with anybody here. And so when Sean opened that door, I thought, yeah, I'm happy, I'd love to. I live here, so I'm more than happy to do it. But that, that's the only reason why it's later than it would normally be, is was that, is just not having that relationship.
So I'm interested in pursuing this, but I would like to, before we vote on a council, because it would have to be in two weeks. We can't vote today, right?
We can't vote today. It's on the actual-
Yeah, we'd have to be in two weeks. I'd like to know if there's a chance that we're going to be able to get some of this grant money if we're too late. Do you see what I mean?
Sure.
I mean, if we're, if we're kind of even with everybody else, and you think we can get some, I mean, obviously, there's a chance that we might, and there's a big chance we won't. But I hate to go into a position where we're not going to get it anyway, and then spend $100,000, and then come next year saying, gee, you know? That's my only apprehension, because I think what I've heard about you, I'm very impressed.
Yeah. The only thing, I guess I would say to that is, I tend to under, you know, under-promise and over-deliver. And I wouldn't come, one, you know, not to play at my home, I wouldn't come to my hometown city, let alone one of my client's members, and say if I didn't have a high confidence level, I can be successful. Now, as you pointed out, officially voting on it, no, but if there was support, the council, that there was enough members on the council that when it comes before the council, it's going to be successful, that for me is enough. I would be, I would go, without a contract in hand, I'd be happy to go to work and, you know, so that, because I get the timing and all that. But, you know, if there's not the support, I respect that too, and that's easy. But if there is, but there's, you know, the timing, you got to have the public here, you know, I would, I would start working on it now, regardless of having some agreement in hand. But again, I just say that, because I don't want that to be the determining factor of, timing-wise, we can't address this until, you know, two weeks from now. But certainly understand, and again, it's no pressure. I just got set up, you know, through this meeting and just wanted to bring it. And again, I'm very confident I can do it, and I've had the conversations with the right people to know that I can. And so that's why I'm here.
So just a clarification on Scott's. So you're saying, so we have one opportunity that's due in two weeks? And you're saying you have the resources and the time and the information you need to put something in for us within that two-week period of time?
Yep. Yeah, I've been working for, you know, again, the last couple of years, again, on the 15, on the 25. And then in the short term now, because there were a few tweaks to the program and ironing those out, how, when that program goes live, what it's going to look like, what they're going to ask for. So as far as the qualifiers, and that's, you know, talking through, again, with the mayor, with Andy, very confident in the projects we talked about, and with my help, they would get funded.
I think, I think we should pursue this.
Okay.
So I think I'm number three.
Okay. So we do have the council's support to start moving forward with this. And I, to be very open, I do, I understand the other council members' apprehension. You're going, well, hold it. Have we really gotten enough? This is, this is a total different process than what we've kind of done in the past. It's, you know, and I guess that I, you know, for the public, you know, this probably started towards the first of August, because it was different. We had a, I reached out to the council to kind of say, hey, are we amenable to some type of rela-, you know, relationship? Our problem is, it's now been three weeks since we've had a council meeting, you know? And so it's also, we kind of caught in that little gap period where making sure everyone was okay to have you come in and even see this as a process. So I appreciate it, but appears we have the three council members, I can-
And I'm not a no.
No, no, and I, I didn't sense it, but you're going, you want more information.
And please, no, I take no fa-, I mean, I've been for many city councils, and I get, and let's be very honest, lobbyists are not construed or portrayed to the general public as a positive. And I get that. The only thing I can hold on is I've done this a very long time, and to find, you know, for me, my integrity and my reputation and everything, I, like I say, I've been in this 22 years. I want to hopefully do another 20 years. And the only way you do that is, one, if you're honest with people, and two, if you're successful at what you do, because it, what I, the community I work in is very small. And so when you're, when you aren't able to deliver, and you, you know, you're not going to last another 20 years. And so that's why I'm very careful, especially, you know, in the private side, I do have other private clients and stuff. It's not nearly as connected. But when you get into the local governments, you guys are all friends with everybody else. And so if you're not successful, that's why I say, if you, happy to talk to anyone in the cities I've worked with, because I generally-
And I will, I didn't want to get too heavy. Everyone I've talked to city-wise, as we met with some mayors and brought up Dave's name, came back strong. And just, it came back as a, you know, much for some, hey, we'd had other experiences with other type of consultants versus with, and that's why I'm going, I feel like we're really hiring maybe the right heart specialist, you know, and going forward. So we'll go ahead, and we'll just appreciate your work on that. We look forward to working with you. We'll bring that as an agenda item back on the 20th.
Excellent. And again, any other questions you have? Please feel free to chat.
I have one last question. You're not planning on building a house in a different city, are you?
No, one interesting other tidbit, and this is something the mayor and I connected on, those of you who are, so on 6,000, there's a, there's a large Christmas light display with, I don't know if you, you can sit.
Behind the stake center there.
Behind the stake center, that's the music, that's my house. And so-
We had the Christmas light, and I'm sorry, there was a connection there, yes, the Christmas lights, but that, he is our Christmas light that does the two houses behind the stake center together that you can go to. This is-
So you had that?
Oh, I'm going to tell my kids that, and they're going to think I met someone famous tonight.
From now, you have that connection back to Dave.
So to answer your question.
You're hired.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not, I'm not planning to go anywhere. My, and, you know, the biggest fear I have right now is my next-door neighbors that I've expanded that show to are actually selling their house. But they love it so much, they're actually saying that whoever they meet with, they're going to put a easement or whatever into their contract, saying basically, you got to be able to allow this to continue on our, you know, our old house as well. Anyway, this, so yeah, no, I'm, I'm here to stay. I've been here 17 years and yeah, be here.
I'll be your neighbor.
So you're all in? Okay.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to consent items. We have a consent item number 3A as approval of our meeting minutes from July 5th, and our work session and regular council meeting on July 18th. We have a library board appointment, which, we actually have the library board appointment here of Rachel Farnsworth is actually here in the audience. And then we have also a number 3C, which is a resolution agreement of inter-local cooperation agreement of an active transportation plan with MAG and Alpine City. I don't know if we would like to have, before we have the consent items, maybe have Rachel come and introduce yourself, and then we can then vote on those. So Rachel, would you mind maybe come up and?
Hi, I'm Rachel Farnsworth. I apologize, my son is positive for COVID, so try not to spread it to all of you tonight. I've lived in Highland for four years, and I'm a professional food blogger, which is kind of an interesting little profession there. I've, I have two cookbooks, one of which publishes in 28 days, and just got its first bestseller designation. So exciting times. I've been looking for an opportunity to volunteer in the local community as I'm winding down my work with professional food blogging. It's self-operational at this point, and I'm looking to retire at the end of the year and enjoy time with my husband and my family, so.
Any questions, Rachel?
No, just nice to meet you. I'm also in the library board, so we'll get to spend the night every month together.
Well, thank you. Scott, did you have something?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for doing a lot to serve.
Thanks.
We will now move on to our consent items. Is there any of those we'd like to be polled?
I'd like to poll 3C.
Okay. Do we have a motion on 3A and 3B?
I'll make a motion to approve consent items 3A and 3B.
I'll second.
We have a motion for 3C and 3B. Are we ready for a vote?
Do we have electronic voting?
Do we have electronic voting? 3, 3A and 3B. So we're only voting on 3A and 3B. Okay, those pass as five to zero. Scott, number 3C.
Okay. I just wanted to learn a little more about this. I talked with Councilmember Rodell last night, so I think I understand it a little bit better. But this transportation plan has to do just with the trails, or does it involve roads?
It involves roads in that they're connectivity to active transportation. So they will look into bike lanes and those connections into trails as well. But like I said, it's active transportation, so it's referring to bikes and pedestrians. That's kind of the primary focus of it, and connectivity, like interconnectivity between the cities of Highland and Alpine. And so that's why this, this joint plan is connecting our trails to each other as well.
So it's active transportation. They're not redesigning roads and connectivity that way. Yes or no?
As far as like redesigning roads, they may give us recommendations for certain widenings to like, to include designated bike lanes in certain areas after their studies are completed. But as far as redesigning their designation as collectors and arterials, that's not what they would be focusing on.
This could be mainly the work and probably on our bike lanes, you know, where in our roads, with where our usage might be at, or what the forecasting for usage. They'll look with, you know, work with UDOT to kind of know, hey, what are you seeing with road trends? They'll also help us where our, the main thing is, we're, like, we have our Murdoch Trail. Just trying to look to see what trails we can make sure are connecting back to the Murdoch, and how they're connecting from Alpine all the way down, and making sure that we have some safe trails or bike paths to get down to some of the other main roads. Am I, so, okay. Now, my understanding, as this comes up, that Highland's going to pay 60% of this, the share, that's, I think the share is 6.17.
It's like 6.67%.
6.67% of the contract, you know, Mountain Land Association of Governments will pay the other.
A hundred grand.
And the, yeah, the 6.7, the 6.67%, is it 60% Highland, 40% Alpine?
That's correct. That's what was agreed upon.
Now, is that based on population, kind of?
I think it was on roadways and things that way.
Yeah, there were a couple of things that were discussed in our meeting, and then that's what it came out to be. We were looking at kind of miles of trails and then square miles in the, like, within our cities as well as population. And that's kind of how it came to be.
Okay. So I want to go ahead and make a motion. I move that the Highland City Council approve consent item number 3C concerning the transportation plan and appropriate, is it $4,076? I've got my, I've lost my thing.
$62.
Oh, yeah, $4,062 to pay our portion.
Have a motion by Scott?
I'll second.
Second by Kim. We ready to vote on number 3C?
If you could just do voice vote, that's easier, please.
Yes. Kim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
And Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, that passes five to zero. We now are on to item number five. This is a public hearing. This is a public hearing and orders our general plan amendment of moderate-income housing elements and implementation plan.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Okay, so this was preliminarily presented to y'all as a communication item on the 16th, where we kind of looked at why this was coming up, and then trying to kind of understand where the council members were at as far as possibly updating current strategies in the existing general plan, and then as far as timeline, timelines go as well, if you're looking into changing those strategies. Based on that communication item, we understood that the council was leaning more towards trying to keep the strategies as similarly as we could while still, while still meeting state code. And so that's what our original proposal is drafted to be, is to meet that as closely as possible. Background again, so in 2008, that's when our comprehensive general plan was adopted, and that included a moderate-income housing element. In 2018, the state passed House Bill 259, which had a list of specific mountain, or moderate-income housing strategies that each municipality had to use or adopt into their general plan. And in 2019, the council did adopt or approve an update to the general plan to include those strategies, and that's what we have currently. And then just this year, in the legislative update, they adopted House Bill 462, and they updated some of those moderate-income housing strategies, and then also added another requirement that each strategy include an implementation plan slash timeline, giving the cities more of an achievable goal. Going a little bit further into House Bill 462, there are a total of 24 strategies. As we discussed a couple meetings ago, they're, basically, each municipality has to have at least three of those 24. And then they state that if a city has five or more, that they could possibly qualify for enhanced prioritization of TIF funds or ARPA funds. And then as far as the implementation plans go, there were some Utah League of Cities and Towns trainings or documents that they put out to kind of help us understand what they expected in an implementation plan. They basically stated that it needs to set out a clear course of achievable, measurable actions that can be taken within a given time period. So they do want us to specify some sort of time period, whether it's five, five years, 10 years, 20 years, just to give us, or the city council, as a goal for when they're going to either look into things or adopt new things, et cetera. In our current general plan, a little difficult to see, but I kind of tried to show, this is what's in our existing general plan. These bolded letters, this is what I have in the staff report as well, are referring to those specific 24 strategies. And so it's kind of saying, this is where, when we adopted this in 2019, this is where we pulled these strategies from. So there are two that are more related to- pulled these strategies from. So there are two that are more related to senior housing. There's one relating to mixed-use zones and then another referring to our partnership with MAG. And then another one specifically surrounding ADUs or accessory dwelling units. Our original proposal, we divided these out because when we went to planning commission, I'll explain it a little bit further, they did recommend some changes or additions. And so I'm just kind of keeping them separate so you can review them separately and choose whether or not to use just the original or just the planning commissions or some sort of combination of the two. But this original one, as far as senior housing goes, obviously the implementation measures in the staff report, but just the timeline, this would be the addition, is saying that within the next five years, the city will update the development code to add regulations for an age-restricted senior housing residential zone. This is just an example, and it's definitely open to the council, change anything. That's just how it was at the planning commission too. They gave their opinions or recommendations after reading through this. And then another point was, over the next ten years, if the last large undeveloped properties in Highland are proposed to be developed, the city would review the properties for potential senior housing projects. This is a general plan and so it's meant to say generally, this is what we could look at if these things come into play. But it's not tying you down to anything. That's just calling that out. For the mixed-use zones, we put, as, as most of Highland's mixed-use developments are relatively new, over the next twenty years, the city will continue to monitor the mixed-use developments for potential redevelopment. That's just if we came to a point where they started to look really old or blighted or deteriorated or whatever, that we would look into improvements. The partnerships with MAG for that timeline, within the next five years, the city will do a comprehensive update of the general plan like we're already planning on doing. And as part of, of, as part of that update, the city would work with MAG to qualify for the community development block grant. That's what they have available to help cities with moderate income housing and other community development projects. To help Highland City identify regional moderate income housing priorities. And then in MAG's statement for the specific grant, they say that this would help the city make goals, policies and implementation measures to address those priorities. And then ADUs, this one, I mean, the state updates ADU requirements every single year, it seems. And so we were kind of like, on an ongoing basis, the city will monitor ADUs and will also seek citizen input on ways to facilitate ADUs in unique circumstances. This, the thought process with this, I'm, as y'all know, the council approved the tax amendment recently, recently of like the setback encroachment. And so that could be something that could qualify as an, as a change to help facilitate ADUs in residential lots, you know, like making it a little easier for them to do a stairway that is into the side setback a little bit. That was kind of the thought process behind that wording. When this was taken to the planning commission, they did hold their public hearing on August twenty-third and there was no public comment on it. They did have some discussion regarding, in that senior housing implementation plan where we called out the larger undeveloped lots, they had concerns that developers would see that and think that by the wording, it would cause them to expect to be able to rezone to senior housing if it was in the code that we're looking into it. And so they, I'll show their proposal in a second, but they wanted to eliminate that section because they didn't want that to seem like it was something that they could all come and for, come forward and apply for. And then they also expressed, it was mainly the chairman and then I, they ended up putting this in their recommendation, but support for detached ADUs as specifically as a strategy for senior housing, but they did express support for it. And so this is their recommendation. They made changes to just the senior housing timeline and the ADU timeline, the other two they left alone. For senior housing, everything's that strike, strike through is what they obviously wanted to eliminate. But then they decided to change the wording to, within the next five years, the city will update the development code to modify or add regulations for age-restricted senior housing options compatible with current zoning, including exploring options for detached accessory dwelling units. And then for the ADUs, they, which, meeting the timeline requirement, they did better to add, within the next five years, the city will monitor ADUs and also seek citizen input on ways to facilitate ADUs in unique circumstances and for senior housing options. That intent was obviously, like I said, for the detached ADUs, that was their way to have a strategy for senior housing. And so that's why they included it in the ADU section. This is kind of an example. I, I'm gonna show another image just to explain ADUs. When we refer to internal or attached or detached, these are just examples of what they could look like for detached. I mean, this is a reflection showing on a corner lot. And so technically they, this one just happens to have frontage here and frontage on the side for that detached building. Others, you could see the little tiny homes or detached houses on, in the backyard where it kind of has a flaglot type of look where they could have a driveway that goes to the back or connects to the back. This is, I just want to show this real quick, some other housing types as far as, here are kind of lower density possible senior housing types, where you have like duplexes or triplexes or the cottage housing like we have in Ridgeview, or just smaller lot homes. And then obviously you have more higher density multifamily looking housing that other cities have used for senior housing. And so it's just trying to help visually what would the council want to see as far as when you look at senior housing, how are you wanting to accomplish those goals? And the planning commission was looking at doing these detached ADUs in order to accomplish that goal. We as staff just recommend that the city council hold that public hearing and approve either the proposed amendment as is, or the one by planning commission, or a possible combination of the two. Council would have to specify how they're wanting to combine the two if they, if you decide to do so. Here are example motions for each of those three options. Another option, we have, and we've provided an alternative motion just in case the council wants to give staff direction to look further into something specifically and we could bring this back to the council on the twentieth. The deadline for this, we do need to have something adopted by October first. And so we do have a little bit of wiggle room if the council doesn't feel ready to adopt something as is. But just wanted to make y'all aware of that.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I think we're gonna go ahead unless there's some comments before we open up the public hearing.
And I'd like to ask a question or two if I could, please. So Kelly, we banter around Caesar, senior, sorry, not Caesar, but senior housing all the time. And for every high-density development we've had in the city, we hear it's for the seniors. But that doesn't hold true in most cases because I don't know how you enforce senior housing. So a lot of Ridgeview was promoted as senior housing. But I, I've watched family after family move in with kids into these small homes and there's not been that much seniors that I'm seeing move in. I mean, some of the families that are moving into our ward have five kids, oftentimes have two or three. We've talked to the principal at Lone Peak, they're all enrolling in Lone Peak. So we talk about we need to build all this senior housing, but nobody enforces that. It seems like it's kind of a way, and I'll talk more about this later, to get high-density into the city. And so my question is, is if it's designated as senior housing, is there any way to enforce that?
There is to an extent. For, this is why we, we technically would have to draft or change something in our code to allow for specific senior housing zones or some sort of PD district that, basically what you would do is you'd make it deed restricted to be fifty-five plus. Currently in Ridgeview, it is age-targeted, but it is not deed restricted. That's, it's termed age-targeted, but because it's not deed restricted, technically anyone of any age can purchase it.
Right.
But there are areas of senior housing where if, like, if you are not fifty-five and older, you cannot purchase the property. That's.
Now, Rob, I think by law, I don't think you could have a whole entire subdivision just be deed restricted. I thought they had to allow like twenty percent to still be, you know, is, what's the legality on this? Deed restricted, age restricted? So there are some restrictions on what the city can do to impose it on people. I think what the general plan would be looking at is, if this is still a goal of the city council, you know, we have a timeframe of how do we implement it because it would be half, it would have to be part of a rezone, where the developer requests that we grant them something that they are
not otherwise entitled to, and in exchange, we say, you must do this for us that we can't otherwise require you to do, developer. And we would have to craft the ordinance, like Kelly said, a PD district where they have to come and come through with a master development plan, where they promised to the city by contract and they recorded against the property that they will put in deed restrictions of the following types. It would take some work to really kind of craft that ordinance and that code and process. So that's why, if this is a goal that the council still has, you could put in this timeline, you know, as we move down the road, we'll continue exploring ways of actually implementing that in a way that doesn't just do age targeting, but actually makes it senior housing, if that's a goal again of the council.
I guess I have a, a question for you, Rob, also. So we basically had what we had discussed a couple of weeks ago and then it went to the planning commission. And their main concern was that, I guess what they say is developers would expect to be able to rezone low-density residential to senior housing with the way it's proposed. Is that a concern or not really?
That was not a particular concern that I had going with this because this was, we didn't modify any of the policies or goals of the general plan. All we were adding was kind of a timeframe and process for kind of continuing to move those forward. So we didn't see that as a come knock on our door and talk to us about rezones.
Okay, so they can't expect that, how we have it worded?
And the council still has, again, final decision-making authority on whether to grant any rezone or not.
Okay. So I guess that's one thing to take into consideration, that that is not a concern. And then the second part of what the planning commission recommended was the ADUs. Is that something that we wanted to discuss or no?
Well, I want to discuss it because it's, we need to be consistent. So we just passed in the last month that you can't have an accessory building attached with a breezeway. Now we're talking about putting in an accessory home that can be attached with a breezeway. And I think that's inconsistent.
And we also did.
And it came through the planning commission before. I think if we have accessory homes, they need to be attached, just like our accessory buildings do. Because to me, if you have all these breezeways and things, what you're doing is subdividing the property. And, you know, time and again, the people of Highland say, we want lower density. And if we were an island in the middle of the Pacific Ocean and there was no other moderate housing around, but we're surrounded with high-density housing in Lehigh and Pleasant Grove, a whole south end of Pleasant Grove and American Forks apartment buildings now. And the question in my mind is, do we have to follow suit? So I, I'm kind of really concerned about that. I understand the concerns of the planning commission, but we can't say, you can't have an attached building and then say you can't. And then I think it gets confusing because we've been getting emails about this. So I think we have to be very careful.
So I happened to be at the planning commission meeting. This is what, this was a, this was the talk about was the ADU. What the conversation was, was that we're noticing we're having some older individuals that they would like to maybe not have, they'd like to stay on their property, but maybe have a child move into their home, or, or even the opposite, have a child come and live in the back, that housing's getting so expensive. One of the conversations they had was, let's assume you have a, a two-lot subdivision, or two lots like down in Bull River, that they could maybe build a eight-hundred-square-foot ADU for a senior person to live in or a child that was family-related, or on other lots. They, that was why they were just bringing it about is that, you know, you could do it where, and I'm only speaking to the planning commission, not saying that's what we do. I'm just saying, the planning commission, it was stating, hey, we can restrict it, that this is not another house or things of that nature. You can make it by square footage and by lot size of what they could have ADU. Now, one of the problems we've been noticing in the city is we have a lot of detached garages. So we have the breezeway issue that came about where they wanted to put a, an accessory dwelling unit in that garage or in a separate unit, so they added a breezeway. That has still not stopped that if someone does a separate detached garage, that I guess if it's in our building thing, they don't do it, but they still are adding above those garages. We're starting to notice there's still a lot of people adding apartments above garages. But my understanding is, we, if it came in a plan that showed that there was an apartment above a garage, we will not grant that, right?
Well, either if, a lot of times it will appear like it could become an ADU, even though they're kind of like, oh, it's just my.
Office.
Office space, or it's just storage, or, and then they change it later. And so we've started recording it against the property. We have them sign something saying that they will never rent out or have anyone occupying or living in that detached structure and then we record it.
But, you know, we just had this discussion a month ago. I just don't know why we, we're going back. I think they just need to be attached. We need to be consistent in our code.
I, I agree with, I agree with Scott that we need to be consistent and that, and this whole ADU thing is a much bigger discussion.
Oh, I think it's a huge, and that's, and even your senior housing, I mean, here we're talking ADU, we're also, if we have a proposal for some senior housing, because here we are sending a, a signal out that we're looking to try to do something with senior housing. We, we have, you know, some, some large landowners or that are already saying, hey, could I do something with senior housing? And as I, and I just want to make sure, we kind of said, we have to go through this process. This isn't just something you can come in and propose an R120, you know, and, and have duplexes on them. You have to go through, is this gonna be a PUD? Is this, and we need to have a code put together for them to come and follow versus us implement it because they're bringing it in. Does that, I think we need to get ahead of the plan versus having a developer come and, and design it for us. Does that make sense? We need to do it, not the developer.
And I agree with that. My concern is, is, you know, we've already got.
We have a plan.
A lot of high-density coming in with Ridgeview, the town center. We had some quote, senior housing over in the northwest corner in Sky Estates. My question is, is why do we need to open the door for more? Because the people say we want low density. And it just, to me, I'm, I'm real concerned about this because it brings in traffic congestion and that. Because I drive through Ridgeview several times, it's right by my home, and I had a fair amount to do with keeping that in Highland. But I think it couldn't be more high-density unless you built multi-story apartment buildings. And, you know, the traffic already is getting horrible. So I, I just think we need to keep it, I.
So keep with option one, original proposal?
I lean towards option one, but I want to support that.
We need to have also a public hearing on this. So how about we have a public hearing then we come back to what options maybe we prefer. So at this time, I'm gonna open this discussion on implementing a plan for moderate income housing at this time is open. Is there anyone that'd like to come up and address the council on item number four, the general plan amendment to modify income housing elements and implementation of a plan? Seeing none, we now close the public hearing. We bring it back either for motion or further
I agree with Scott on this one and prefer to pass it as it originally was. I would be interested though, so I was telling the mayor, I tried to listen to that planning commission meeting and it was really hard to hear the comments because I was really interested to hear the discussion. Everyone went back to try to listen because they want to understand what they're saying. But, I mean, I think we all want, I want my kids to be able to live in my backyard, but I don't want everybody's kids to be able to build a house in their backyard. Like, so I think that we need to be careful and for right now, I like what we have done.
Yeah, I'm fine with option one.
So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
So Helena, we've kind of, there was a public hearing. I'll go ahead and open it back up if you want to come up with a question. We need to come up here first to the, if you can. Is that okay? Sorry.
We're getting portable mics, Helena, so it will, shortly this will be a problem.
Want to come here? Is this easier here?
Sure. Thanks, guys. My, my question is, are senior housing down at, oh, what's, huh? Ridge, you got a name for it? That is such a mess down there. I can't believe it. I've driven through there and I'm so discouraged on the whole thing. The idea was that we wanted seniors to be able to have a place to live and now the prices are higher than some of our own houses we'd sell for. And. And there was, the plan originally said that was going to be senior housing. I'd fought for that for six years, and we finally were going to have some senior housing. And it's going, it seems to be going down the drain all the time. And I'm just wondering, is it still in? Is, are they still going to do it?
It's, it's not, Helena, when it very first approved, we, there was a lot of proposals. One of the proposals was it was going to be senior housing. It's age-targeted. So there are some houses over there that they have that are more Rambler-style in what they have, that's age-targeted. There's no, what we were talking about, deed-restricted, that has to be a certain age that only lives in it. It's targeted towards that age, and so some of that housing is targeted. Any family can move in.
Yeah. But what about the, the senior house, building that they were going to put on the other side?
I'm not familiar with that one.
Well, in the original thing, we were going to have senior housing, and it was going to be a condo-style.
Okay, so there's apartment, that was over here, and I think it was called Apple...
Creek.
Apple Creek. That was not approved. So they, right, that's next to UCCU. That, that plan was not approved.
So can I answer? I think she's talking a lot about Ridgeview, if I understand.
Yes, I was.
So they are building a lot of townhomes along North County.
Right.
They've done one section, and there are a number of senior couples that are moving in there, because I feel, they come to my church, basically. But it's not totally age-restricted to seniors. But those townhomes are available, and they're building two more blocks of them, if I understand. So there'll be a lot of townhomes available for seniors, but it's not age-restricted because there's been some single mothers with three kids moving in. Some of those townhomes have four bedrooms in. I don't know how they do that, but they do. So, I don't know. It's, it's my, it's a dilemma, I think.
I have some of the original drawings, and I know there was a big building, a big area that was going to be nothing but seniors, and it wasn't going to be over there where all those small ones were. Anyhow, maybe you've changed them all since then, but I'm just concerned because there are a lot of people in this town who are, well, you put out some figures here recently about how many people in Highland are over the age of 60, and that amazed me. But there are people who want to stay in this town, but they don't want to stay in that. I'm one of them. If it wasn't for my neighbors, I don't know what I'd do, because I'm 88 and I'm staying in my house, because I'm not going to live in something like that.
Thank, thank you for your input.
Thank a lot of people, thank that. So can I ask a quick question, Mayor, from Kelly? So if we go with option one, what does that mean for ADUs? Are they attached? Or is there nothing talking about ADUs? I'm still a little confused.
The original proposal, as far as ADUs, you know, I'm just going to pull it back up. It's just, like I explained, that setback encroachment thing, it was just kind of the council being open to, when situations like that come up, that you'd be open to considering changing certain or specific regulations that could make it easier for a resident to have an ADU in their home.
So you're on the hot seat when people come in and want to do things.
Uh-huh.
And do you think, I mean, to me, it just seems we need to be consistent on what we do in the city. So whether it's an accessory building, or whether it's an accessory dwelling building, it just seems we've got to be consistent. So you can't have breezeways for some and breezeways not for others, and some attached and some not attached. Does it make sense to be consistent? As, I mean, you've got to deal with it.
It makes sense. I'm like, even with, I mean, there are always going to be residents that feel like every code change we have, to them, it's inconsistency, you know, just because, "Oh, I was told this one thing three months ago, and now it's this," you know? So they, it's, I mean, it's difficult for people that are spending money on getting plans done because they thought it was one way, and then you change it, and it's, you know? But I, you get both extremes with our residents, you know? Like, some people that move in or are used to having detached ADUs or see them other places will be very supportive of them. But then you have other residents that are like, "If the council ever approves that," you know? It's just kind of, you see both sides. I see both sides.
It does this, the ADU one, it really does sound like the city will monitor ADUs, basically, like, come up with a very creative way to do this and come and talk to us about it.
Yeah, because the very last, it says the ADUs in unique circumstances.
Yeah, I feel like that's the last thing we want to do, right? Because we can, everybody has a unique circumstance that we can create, so I, so I...
Maybe we just have it say, timeline, "On an ongoing basis, the city will monitor ADUs." Also, you know, and I...
And we'll seek citizen input.
Yeah, yeah. Now, let me ask you, so this is the original proposal that we had go to the planning commission is option number one, is that correct? Option number one's what we approved, and then it went to planning commission.
Yeah, this is option number two, is planning commissions. And so for ADUs, they, they did specify more of a timeline, which technically, that's what state code asks us to do. So if y'all wanted to add that five-years thing, I would not be mad.
And that was another big thing, is they felt like that we didn't have any timeframes in the original one.
For the one.
They recommended having a timeframe.
Yeah. I would, I mean, I would recommend if we can, or if the council can come up with something to, if, if you don't like this wording, to provide some sort of detail as far as what direction you would like to go. Just because as far as monitoring ADUs, that could just mean that we do what we do now and we have a permitting process. You know what I mean?
And they're attached now.
Yes, they're attached.
And we can't add a stipulation that says we would like the state legislature to quit telling us how to regulate ADUs in our town.
Yeah, I think you can at the end.
We certainly can.
If we get the lobbyist guy, can we do that?
One of the concerns I have is, when this very first came about in 2018, we responded as a city. It sounds like we should have said in five years, "We'll look at doing Ridgeview." Instead of re-respondered, and we started putting in higher density up at Ridgeview. And now they're saying, "Well, we want more." And I'm going, "Well, the problem is, we probably gave you what you wanted then, and now we keep asking for more."
Not everything.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we're probably, always to keep saying, "In five years, we'll do something." Five years, because they don't seem to ever recognize we've done, what we should say, "We've done it. We're done."
We're done.
Yeah.
Because Ridgeview's not going to be done for another five years anyway. So we're doing it.
I, I continue to use that one in my report back to them, so they're...
Kelly, we have to make so many changes to qualify, right, to meet state code. If ADUs was completely dropped and we left the others, do we still meet the qualification? Is it just three?
We should. I mean, yes, we would still have three technically.
So we could leave, we could remove any, any changes to the ADU code that either staff proposed or planning commission proposed and leave the other, is it three?
But we did just change our ADU. We changed that they can't have a breezeway.
Well, that was code.
Be attached, yeah.
But as far as the general plan, are you suggesting just not doing an implement, like, not doing an, a timeline on it and just keeping the implementation measure as is? Or are you saying getting rid of the implementation?
Getting rid of, so we had to change in three different sections, right? So if we just change, if we just pulled the ADU changes you've proposed, would we still meet qualifications?
Number E, if we remove number E, is that, wouldn't it be E?
Yes, but that, just noting or clarifying that that's in our existing general plan. It's not part of the proposal. And so you'd be adding, "Okay, let's remove this implementation measure that we added back in 2019."
I'm sorry, I miss, I miss, I misspeaking. So yes, don't put the timeline with it that...
Okay, so you're just saying, "Keep that portion as is and then not do a timeline."
But we've done that. This is implementation. We view and update the regulations for accessory dwelling units with the land code. We actually did that. We've done it. So we can put down that we will do and have done.
But does it really encourage the creation of additional housing options for residents? Sorry.
Why can't we just write back that we're ahead of the curve? We're not doing any more.
So council, let me, are we ready to do something tonight on this? We have till the 20th. Is this something that we are ready to move on? Do you have the motion that we can move on, or do you want to move this to 20th?
Yeah, I don't really want to move it to the 20th, because I think we, I think we do what Erin said and remove the part about ADUs, or even just remove the part that says, "I cannot see from this far away."
I'm sorry. Okay, wait. No, it's, here's the ADU timeline. This is what she was saying, just not including.
So I would say either remove that or just say...
Period after citizen input.
Yeah, on an ongoing, yeah, the city will monitor ADUs and will also seek citizen input.
Period.
Period.
Like that.
Done.
Okay.
And now we have four things.
I'll second that.
Was that a motion? Everything except, and then you...
That motion.
That, that I would make a motion to do what I just said.
And I'll second it. Do you understand the motion? Okay, so let's start over again.
Okay.
Kelly, why don't you go to the, the options?
You can move, the move on option one, and then you add in the wording for...
So yes, yeah, option one, and then taking out the timeline for ADUs.
Yeah, so moving with option one and removing the timeline, we go back to the other slide where it was in bold.
Yeah.
I don't think you're removing the whole timeline, you're just editing out the last phrase.
Yeah, sorry. So, yeah, so option, the original proposal with the change to the ADU section that will say, "On an ongoing basis, the city will monitor ADUs and will also seek citizen input." Period.
I will second it.
I have a motion by Brittany, second by Scott.
Did you get it?
Stephanie, you okay with that motion? Okay, we ready for a vote?
Yeah.
That passes five to zero. We now move on to item number five, communication. This is on the Mountain Ridge Park. We're going to go through several things in the next, this is a communication item, the total park cost and the funding sources, and then we're going to start looking at options and contracts on what we're doing. So I believe that is you, Erin.
Thank you, Mayor, it is. So we, we figured, so this is a continuation of our meeting last time, follow-up based on council direction, and we wanted to give you an overall, just a big picture before we asked you to start voting on things, because we felt like that would be necessary. So if you'll go to the first slide for me, Kelly. You're not going to see this very well on the screen. We have a few extra copies that will filter down to the audience, but you'll, you're getting a handout of this coming towards you. What this is, is a table of the approved sources that we had either talked about previously or that council directed us in the last meeting to add in as revenue sources to fund Mountain Ridge Park. So I'd say some new things that we talked about again last meeting were parks tax on down, so that includes the parks tax for this fiscal year, the reimbursement money we're, we're expecting from our 6800 West project, money from our town center exaction fund. That $300,000 is what we will have net when we finish paying out a final owner on that property. 2020, sorry, fiscal year '22, net revenue, we don't have a final number there yet, so that's not additive to the total. The one-time net revenue for this fiscal year, a portion of our fund balance, 7.5% of our fund, well, let's see, a portion of our fund balance that would take us down to 27.5% of annual, so of our annual revenues. We would still maintain 27.5% in our fund balance. We have, we feel comfortable about a private donation we're expecting for $100,000. The Highland Foundation has raised $45,000. And the impact fee revenue for this fiscal year for parks' impact fees. We're budgeted to do $1.5 million there. To be conservative, we put in $1 million to go towards Mountain Ridge. So the intention, and you'll see this on the next, the next slide, is that any monies that we have currently in our budget that are not, or that we have currently in city accounts that are not in the Parks Capital Fund, Tyler's, this next item, action item, is to move all of those into the Parks Capital Fund, just so that we are playing with one pot of money to avoid confusion.
Just one little addendum. I checked today, and in the foundation, there's $48,000, so another three.
Another three. We will take it. Thank you, Scott.
Awesome.
Okay, moving on to your second page, these are potential extra revenue sources or, or monies that we're not, we're still waiting on final amounts. So if you remember, we, we are planning to apply for a water conservancy grant for all of the zero-scaping we are putting in. What the final amount on that will be, we're still budgeting because we did a change in the plans, and it's going to be all around the park, not just on the north side, next to the street. The second is a private donation that Mayor Ossler is meeting with shortly to firm up details related to that, and that's for half a million dollars. The last one is a discussion point, or not the last one, excuse me, the third one is a discussion point for council. So if you remember, a little while ago, we, we told you that we found some money in what was called the Street Tree account. So what that is, is it's an, it's what we call a liability account that doesn't show up on our normal books unless you're looking for it specifically. So Tyler and I jointly looked for any other of that type of money out there, and this is one that we, that was, that came up. And to the best of our auditing capabilities, it's the only other one out there. We are having our auditor look into it as part of his analysis this fall. But what this is, is back in 2009, American Fork put a PI pond at the mouth of the canyon in the debris basin that we talked about last council meeting. As a part of that, American Fork City paid Highland City $104,000 to put in landscaping in the front of that. We have never landscaped that area, nor do we intend to. We don't feel like it's a good use of funds, number one. Number two, there's no water to that area. It would be very difficult to get a decent landscaping in that area, and it's really used as a debris basin, storage yard, where it's not near residential homes. To my knowledge, we've never received complaints about it. In talking with the mayor and Rob, and ironically, Andy was the engineer for American Fork City when this happened, and so he's in the minutes in relation to this discussion. We have done other work in that area and allowed American Fork City to use that area for other purposes, so we feel like our obligations are fulfilled there, and we can use this money for other landscaping, i.e. a park. But we wanted council's approval to move forward there.
Can I ask you a quick question? So American Fork's not to come back and say, "We paid you $100,000 and you didn't do anything with our money." Did we do something with the money? I mean, are we being, I mean, I think it's great if we could use it, but do we have an obligation to return this to American Fork?
So, you know, I had Rob look into this. It wasn't, Rob, do you want to speak to that more as to, as to how we felt about that?
I don't know if I can explain how you can feel about it, but I can explain what the law is. This was an exaction, meaning American Fork applied to, this isn't property, they, they got the right to use this, and they applied for a conditional use permit. As part of that, the city said, "That's going to have certain impacts on us. You pay us $100,000 to offset those impacts in the form of landscaping." Because it's an exaction, it's not really tied to a timeframe where we have to use it. Impact fees, for example, we get it, we have to spend it on certain projects within six years. An exaction is something we demanded from them as part of us approving a project. So legally, there is no specific requirement for us, you know, to use it within a certain timeframe. They didn't object to, you know, us, I mean, they might have objected to it, but they consented to paying us the money as a legal matter. Now, whether you, you know, as a matter of relations or history or whatever, you know, to honor that arrangement, that's, that's more of what the council can do.
Would it this been at the same time, so there's a holding pond that American Fork uses, is this at the same time where they were granted use? Is that Highland property, or did American Fork actually buy that property?
Andy would know that.
It's in the debris basin, and that's your holding pond. It was an exaction for that, wasn't it?
Yeah, so actually, this brings us full circle back to the debris basin discussion that we had, you know, a couple of weeks ago. So where this all came about is because the American Fork facility was within the corporate boundaries of Highland. Um, so, uh, where this all came about is, uh, because, uh, the American Fork facility was within the corporate boundaries of Highland. Uh, American Fork had to get a conditional use permit from Highland or a site plan approval. If you want to think of it that way, they got a site plan approval. Part of the requirements for the site plan approval were, um, that, uh, you know, when you did a project in Highland, you had to have a certain percentage of landscape. And, uh, at the time, and still today, it didn't make any sense to go and put a bunch of, uh, landscape in front of the debris basin. And, you know, debris basin today continues to be a very native area and, uh, you know, has multiple functions. One of which, the American Fork, uh, PI pond is in the middle of the debris basin. Um, and as Erin alluded to, oftentimes you'll see, uh, construction staging for material, for things that are happening up the canyon, in the debris basin, et cetera. So, uh, at the time, uh, American Fork said, uh, you know, "We'd rather give you the 100 grand than put landscaping up here that really didn't have any function and that, that, you know, the city didn't want to maintain, uh, you know, kind of little island of landscape in the middle of, uh, uh, what was otherwise a pretty native and rural area."
So if I remember correctly, um, because I was on the council and we changed the borders between American Fork and Highland, but the second pond is just south of the east-west quarter and next to the Alpine Highway was actually in Highland when it was built. And so I don't know if this exaction fee had to do a little bit with that because it was later that we changed the boundaries and put that in American Fork. So, and there was a lot of discussion on that because of who, which engineering firm designed it.
This, this one specifically, uh, per my, per my memory and I believe confirmed by the minutes, had to do with the, uh, with the.
With the one up in the debris basin, yeah.
In the debris basin.
So Andy, let me ask you, was your understanding of the 104 kind of a resolution between Highland and American Fork to resolve any political difficulties or things going on, and this was kind of how they resolved it?
Uh, put maybe a little more, uh, directly, I mean, American Fork, uh, paid their way out of the landscaping requirement, if you will.
Okay.
They said, you know, "We'll give you the money instead of having to require," instead of having to do landscaping.
We have a former council member that might have been involved in that. Would you like to hear a little bit of detail?
Well, I, and we could, but my, I just wanted to make sure that we don't have
An obligation.
An obligation either legal or morally to return that money to American Fork. And if the consensus is that we don't, that it was an exaction, I don't have any problem with. I just want to make sure that we're fair to our neighborhood.
And this is ultimately a political question, Scott, which is why it's before the council is, you know, we feel like it can go either way. And so council, what do you want to do with the money, with the 104,000 dollars? Our, our instruction that we felt from you is find every resource you can for Mountain Ridge Park, and this is one that came to the surface.
I will also comment, when we were talking through this, there's a lot of ways that the $100,000 could have been spent on landscaping. It could have been spent on putting in trees and bushes and sod and stuff. That doesn't make sense for that area. The other thing we contemplated was Highland City, this is Highland City property and Highland City maintains it to a degree to make sure it stays open and accessible for the cities to use, including American Fork. It's been 10-plus years, I think, since this has been put in.
It was roughly 2,008 when all this was going on. The one point of clarification is real quick. Where the PI pond for American Fork sits is actually owned by all three cities. Uh, it's in the debris by, debris basin proper. Highland City owns outright the land just to the east of it, but, uh, county website's not working for me to confirm at least not only.
It says city, it took me a minute too, City of Highland et al.
The et al is all three cities. So where the, where the pond sits properly is owned by all three. Um, but, uh, the, the land just east of it, uh, and that's, the pair should be working for Kelly, but mine's not working.
I, I think the, the pond's on the third that Highland owns.
Uh, could be. That's why I was trying to confirm before I ran my mouth.
You don't have to answer that. As we, as you can see, there's, there's been road access that's been granted now. This area, the city's had to maintain. The question comes in, we have 104. Is there other information you need to be able to help make a good decision on this?
No, I'm fine with it.
We are fine with what?
Using it for the park.
I'm fine as well.
Okay, you gotta have a verbal. I, I see some.
Yes, yes, use it, use it on the park. Yes. All right, and then the next one from there, uh, is the, uh, sorry, back into the potential extra revenue sources is the Parks Capital Fund balance. So this is, um, I was getting them confused in my mind and I wanted to make sure council is clear on this as well. So what we talked about already for sources you've, you've said, yes, go ahead with, are the revenues we expect to collect for this year's impact fees. However, we already do have, um, 3.6 million dollars sitting in the account, um, that is unallocated. And so you could take $1 million of that balance and then make the assumption that over the next, let's see, four years, um, we will collect a million dollars to be able to fully pay off the bonds.
So, um, you know, I think that's a good option too. So what we're basically seeing is we've found the funding, which at this point includes about 648,000 dollars of donated funds. Because there's 100,000 for the pavilion, 500,000 that's been committed. But we haven't even started to kind of general fundraising. Um, I, I found out, uh, Councilwoman Roldella, um, led the foundation into a way that we may be able to get a Venmo account through Build Butter. That looks really promising. And so that could open up a lot of small fundraising. Plus, we talked 10 days ago about having a fundraising presentation. I have, I've made a list of 31 families that I know that I think financially could donate if they so desire. I'm sure there's lots more in the city. And so I, I think this is before we've even kind of got real serious about going out and doing more fundraising. So I'm wondering if we're successful with the fundraising and things, will we have to use all of these sources?
No, and that's, and that's a direction we need from council at the end of tonight as well is, as you see, you know, sneak preview, we, we're getting very close to be able to fully funding this park. Especially if council decides not to go forward with some things or if, um, if some of our in-kind, uh, donations end up happening, um, that we're working through like with surf soccer. And so, uh, most of these fun, well, not most, some of these funds, um, do need to go towards parks. Um, but some of these funds can go towards other things and if, you know, depending on council's direction, the more fundraising money we get, the less that we have to spend on this park, the more freedom you have to spend on other things.
And I think we ascertain that we cannot pay the park bond off early.
Correct. Um, Tyler looked into that and, um, there was a clause in there that we, we just can't pay it off early on the park bond. Is that correct?
That's correct. The building bond does allow for a, uh, an early termination, um, in 2024. Um, it's scheduled to be paid off in 2026, um, but that's the building bond. The park, uh, park bond will not allow for any early termination.
But it's scheduled to be completed in 2027, so that's five years, correct?
Correct.
And we, and you think even if we appropriated a million dollars out of that, we could still pay our bond off on time?
Uh, we, we feel comfortable with that. Currently, the budget, um, for fiscal year '23, we've anticipated 1.5 million dollars in impact fee revenue this year alone. So the $1 million would, would be dropping that down to 250 per year, which is a significant, uh, very conservative estimate moving forward.
Okay.
So with that, the other source I didn't see on here, maybe I haven't looked through, like, you know, like we have a, a donor to be able to, we'll put the baseball diamond in as well as, you know, a possible agreement with surf soccer. Those are not counted as extra.
Not as revenue. We, we'll talk about those in the expense side, Mayor.
Okay.
So, um, so on Tyler's item, on the next item, we do have, um, those bottomed to the American Fork landscaping escrow and the Parks Capital Fund balance as items to, um, for the council to include. Um, and wanted to, if you want any changes, we need to make sure that we know now and for Tyler's item as well.
Okay, what you're asking for is are we okay adding these extra funds is what you just asked. Council, what's your feelings on this extra fund? Now, the 500,000 we can't commit, I think, until we have it. I mean, that's not money the city has in a, an account to build a control yet. Once it comes in, then it could be added in.
Correct. So it's just the Parks Capital Fund at this point that I'm also, I'm asking you about.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I'm supportive.
I'm supportive too, as long as we can pay our bond off on time.
You know, the only, only risk we really have is that the economy, we have Ridgeview. If Ridgeview builds itself out in the next five years, we'll have plenty of money for the park, you know, to pay off the bonds.
It looks like they're going to. I mean, yeah.
I mean, we, we're not counting other homes. We still have other homes that are going to be built during that time to build to kind of get it done. But that's, is that, am I thinking correct, Tyler and everyone else, is this should automatically, as, I mean, you're saying, we budgeted 1.5 million. As long as we get 250 million coming in, we should be okay. The only other question is, is we took a million dollars from this year where we said that we had the 1.5. If we don't have, uh, a million come in this year, then we've kind of borrowed, where did we borrow that from? Does that, does that what I'm saying? We're taking a million from this year. If we don't generate a million in our Parks Capital Fund bounce, is what we thought was going to happen, then, then that money's also not there. This is not, the other money we physically have, this is money we don't.
You're correct, Mayor. That's, that's, uh, we're counting on fiscal year '23 money as well as that million dollars in the next four years. So there is a measure of, of calculated risk there.
Which is maybe where Scott's, uh, just Councilmember Smith's point about fundraising comes up, right?
Yeah, if we can fundraise, that would be where we'd want to replace it, I think, and then, yeah.
Okay. So you're still okay with this Parks Capital Fund bounce, a million dollars being put here as, and yet still also go fundraise? Is that the understanding?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Sarah, Scott?
Yes.
Tim and.
Definitely fundraise.
Okay. Okay.
All right, moving forward. So we've talked about revenue. Now we're going to talk about expenses. So this is our spent or committed funds, um, information, and it hasn't changed very much since we, um, spoke last. Uh, we, there was some charges we hadn't thought about that, um, paying Rocky Mountain Power to, um, get us some power to the area. And then just some miscellaneous things that we accounted for, but, um, overall, these, these are the funds that we already spent or are, are needing to spend to finish what council has already approved through contract. So in looking at all of that, that is 5.1 million dollars, which is almost 3 million dollars, which still leaves us almost 3 million dollars if you count. So this actually, I was trying to debate how to do this, but that's, um, so, going back, so we had 8 million dollars in the approved, already approved sources. If we're now adding in a little over a million, it's actually about 9 million. So that number goes up to about 4 million surplus that we have from, um, from planned revenue sources, given council's direction to me. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. All right, moving on. Um, I wanted to give you a reminder, you have this map in front of you, so we're going to start talking about gap areas and it all ties back to the map and the color codes on your map as to what areas we're talking about. Okay, so next slide, Kelly. Okay, this is what, what we staff have deemed priority items because it's finishing the areas essentially that we've already started or finishing an area in gap two that we have a significant donor for who is ready to move forward. And so what this is, is, um, gap one, the playground area, and then gap two, which is surrounding the baseball fields. So what this is, is all of the costs associated with those two areas. Um, and we did include things like the entry monument and donor plaques. We tried to think of everything. We did also add contingency into these estimates, um, as well as security cameras. We felt like while we were building a nice new park, um, we should throw those costs in now rather than trying to retrofit later. And so we really did try to include every possible cost in that. And so that, um, those total costs to finish, um, phase one, to do gap area one and gap area two is 1.8 million dollars. What is the change orders for phase one, the 500,000? Andy, you want to speak to the specifics there?
Yeah, if you recall, uh, and we'll talk about these in a couple, I have a couple of, but, um, when we bid out phase one, um, we, uh, kind of came back and said, "Okay, everybody, we want to, uh, change the zero skate along the front edge." So just changing the zero skate. I don't, I have pictures here, but it just keeps moving, you know, zero skate, zero skate change is 113,000. They also came back and said, "Oh, we want to set the park up, uh, probably electrical to be able to move something there and have a stage and have a food truck." Uh, you know, area and, uh, and have power, power available at the, uh, pavilions or vendors can have power. Um, anyway, and the last thing is when we approved the, uh, the, well, two things, when we approved the pavilions, we can bounce us the steel structures with having the concrete puddings or anything. And so it's a concrete form and also in improving the, uh, choosing solid tag, um, it caused us to, uh, change some of the grading as well as improving the, the, uh, baseball field. It caused us to, to change some of the grading and so, uh, it's kind of all the changes that, uh, were set in motion by, you know, when we approved phase one and, uh, none of those changed or reflected in that original process. And so that's kind of drawn us current with all the different changes that ensued after we did phase one. Uh, and, and so, uh, that, that would be kind of baseline change order to finish phase one. And then the gap areas would add the, the kind of purple area and then the, uh, what do I have to call it? That's like the, uh, orange area. So it would be finished, all, uh, the contract areas, it's, it's a change order. A little of that goes outside of that area, but it's kind of the electrical that was with that area and other things. So it's kind of bringing this current with all the design changes.
Andy, where's the stage for the, we have seen a.
We're setting it up so it'll be directly, yeah, Kelly's got it on screen, just directly south of the big one there.
But it's not a purple stage.
It's not a purple stage. It'd still be the, the, uh, tractor trailer is a little bit bigger, a little bit higher, a little bit more adapted to the future. But that would be set up with the power there, so it shouldn't have no big generators and everything. And, uh, you know, with the pavilions, I mean, the, either side of it would have, uh, power. So that, you know, we'd be set up, have, have a major level on the side of there, and they have power.
Is that, um, the setup like that?
Yeah, exactly, kind of that, per, the, the edges of, well, kind of the green, purple, and the base. The, the green, per, purple, and the base, kind of, yeah, between the two small pavilions, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, kind of that, along that, that's a walkway there and so, uh, we're trying to set that up with electrical so that, uh, uh, you got the ability, we still have straight power cords to give them what we have, power box that we will plug and then plug into it. And that would be walkway, kind of be the, you know, primary way that you distribute it to the vendor.
So, Andy, can I ask a quick question? I'm finishing this with phase one. You talked about electrical and the zero skate. What, tell me what the sums are?
Uh, we, it's been such a crazy year, uh, with materials that, knowing that we were looking to do at least a portion of the southern area, um, we had to go ahead and order some additional drainage, some, some drainage in, in some of the southern area because we were so far out on, on a lot of the parts.
So that's, yeah, below the soccer.
That some have low, and then we ended up finding a contractor this summer that could get us a few and get us ahead of the game, if you will, on the other four main. So we went ahead and had them install a few too because it's been a very, all of our, all of our construction projects suffered a long way. And another very challenging year for materials. So this is for drainage, it would keep, um, the homes, the residential homes to be flooded from, right, right. The big soccer field is kind of in the southwest.
Corner ultimately has a little bit of a basin in it. It's kind of a, uh, I guess a catch-all. Um, but, uh, yeah, we want the drainage to be primarily sub-surface and so we're putting in the, the, uh, subs to take care of the drainage and put it below any of the basement elevations.
Like Andy said, so, um, so this is, I'm, I'm, this is designed to give you an overview and the next two or three items, excuse me, that you'll be voting on have to do with this. So the first one is the revenue and then the next two are, um, change orders or the beginning, um, for finishing out these phases, or excuse me, gap areas.
Can you just remind me, when we talk about bathrooms, how many, I think they're in, are there individual doors? Is that correct? And how many do we end up?
Eight.
So it's like four on each side. Then as we look at the three pavilions, we have a large pavilion. How many tables can that sit versus the other two?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't remember the number of tables. I apologize, Mayor. But we do have one large one. Um, if the drawing's accurate, then, uh, then we have eight tables on the big one and we have, uh, four tables on the small one, um. four tables on the small one, but I don't know how accurate the drawing is in that regard. Might be 12 on the big one, and eight, and six on the small ones. Just trying to look real close at the drawings.
Eight, eight, eight individual bathrooms, and that is, can be, they can be opened year round, I just remember.
Yeah, we're going to heat this one, we're doing the, the radiant heating in the floor, similar to what we did at the big one at Highland Glen, so that it can be opened.
The bathrooms are opened year round, and then we talked, and I, maybe this is on a separate thing, about food trucks, power, is that in a different phase?
So that's in the change orders for phase one, that's part of all of that.
Okay.
So the, the food truck power would be placed in the parking lot, either side of the primary entry, kind of in that, you know, either side on, on the map that you're looking at, it would be in the area that says phase one, in that white kind of parking area, and then it, the same area, if you will, to the east side, just kind of either area that frame the primary entry, we'd put, we're putting power.
Will we have power in, in the landscaping at all?
We'll have, we won't have power for food trucks in landscaping, but we will have, you know, our primary power for the whole place is, stems from the area next to the, kind of between the big pavilion and the bathrooms, that's where the main, if you want to call it power center for the park, will be. So what we were putting in the landscape was power for the stage, and then power for the vendors, you know, kind of along the purple, 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 green interface.
Mayor and Council, do you have any other questions about the priority unfunded items that we laid out for you? So in total, again, that surplus number will jump up by a million dollars based on your direction tonight, so that still gives us 2 million dollars to do other, you know, to prioritize other gap areas.
Okay.
So let's move to the largest table in your packet here, it's our unfunded, other unfunded items. And again, this is where, while staff has made an assumption and prioritized, you know, based on what we've laid out here, that's something we want to, your confirmation on. So we prioritized gap area three from a flow standpoint, if you're going to finish the playground and, you know, playground area and the baseball field area, pickleball's kind of right in the middle of that, and so we felt like it made sense to do that next, which costs almost a million dollars to do, to finish that off. Pickleball courts, basketball courts, everything within that area. And again, some, so on this sheet, you'll see some things that maybe you want to hold off on, or maybe you want to wait until, to see if we're going to have donor, donations for. So for example, within gap three, we have lights at the pickleball court. And again, this is all inclusive, so if there are things in here you have concerns about, please let us know as we move forward there.
So how much are the garbage cans going to cost? 1,500, is that what you told me? Each?
Yes. Aren't they the nice ones?
Yeah, they're the nice ones.
They're not the stainless steel ones, too.
They're the powder coated ones at the top, you know, that we kind of input in the parks.
So about 1,500 apiece?
Roughly, I don't remember the exact number, but they're approximately.
And it was delineated how many we need, but can you just tell me real, how many garbage cans we were talking about?
That number's escaped me, I'm looking, I think it was like 20, when you looked at the entire park.
Okay. And they're the nice ones, kind of, that you see on the Murdoch Canal Trail with the kind of the metal and that you put the basket in, or what, what do they look like?
They're the ones that we've been putting in, like, we put some in at Spring Creek, I think, but they're, they're, they're powder coated metal, they got a little bit of a top to, that you have to put them in from the side so it don't fill full of water, and then they do have a, you know, Highland logo on them.
See, I can't remember the garbage cans over there. Are they nice looking?
I don't know, at Spring Creek. I mean, if they have a logo, and if you donate, it'll do your face.
Oh, I don't, I don't either. I didn't want to put my face on it, that would be bad.
So the engineering costs are just coming from the front page, where we had 200 and 160, is being allocated for each, or is this extra?
It's each, so the, no, so the 200 is to finish phase one and the gap, gap one and two, and you'll see within each of these, there, there's also some engineering costs that we estimate needing to happen.
Above the 200 and above the 160, we have more engineering construction costs?
Yeah, the, the big engineering construction management expenses, I mean, we've lumped everything that we're doing, we lumped the survey, the construction management oversight, and all the soils testing, we've kind of put that all in that category, but there's a certain amount that, of that, and the greatest portion of that that you're going to spend just because you're there and occupying that ground for a time, certainly with each additional phase that we, you know, look at, there's a little bit of extra expense, but, you know, just, we're going to build this in about the same timeframe, right? You know, it's going to be, you know, approximately, you know, nine, 10 months, and, and so just, we're going to have a certain amount of expenses because we're there for 10 months, and if you're building a little extra, it's not going to add twice that expense, even though you, does that make sense?
Well, I'm just, okay, that's just.
Incrementally, we're trying to make sure we're counting for everything, but I guess what I was trying to get at is, is, you know, on each one of these additional phases, we've added 15,000 dollars for engineering construction management, just to make sure.
So I, and I'm just going to kind of, our engineering is 160, and our engineering, our design, and then we have to go do engineering. Why is our engineering not doing it? Why do we have to have a design and then go to engineering?
Well, and that's, that's what I was trying to explain, Mayor, is engineering's maybe kind of a cover-all term, but it's, it's our soils testing, it's our materials testing, it's our construction oversight.
How much does that cost? 30,000? I'm just being very.
Yeah, yeah, our, our primary bid for the, for the first, first phase materials testing was 23, and then we've got an onsite representative, because all of our, you know, we've got to have somebody there for continuity, our guys will kind of stop in, but we'll have somebody there for continuity, that's the biggest bulk of the expense, then you've got some surveying in there, and, so yeah, it is kind of a budgetary number at this point, it's a number that we haven't spent, but it's a number that we feel like we need to allocate money for, because it will be a real expense that we realize with the construction.
And then the contingency, we could save this if we do this correctly, versus just also, I call it give it away as a contingency, I mean.
About 20% contingency.
15%. And we, you know, and we absolutely hope we don't have to use any of that money, however, being that we were scraping every source of funds for this, we felt like we wanted to be liberal in our budget estimates, to make sure that we were covered. We certainly don't want to promise a park and not be able to build it if we have contingency that we, we did not plan for contingency, I should say.
Okay, so on gap number three at the top, as pickleball, the basketball court was something we added recently, we thought we would add if we got funding, so as a council, that is something I think we got to chime in, are we wanting the basketball to go in at the same time as pickleball?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, the only thing, the only thing I could see is if you decide that pickleball was so popular, you wanted to add another four courts, you know, once you have that basketball, you can't do that as much as, but if you want to go ahead and go with the basketball, so you're wanting to do basketball?
Yeah, I think because then you kind of touch all age groups, you got the pickleball, basketball teams, you got the playground, plenty of younger kids, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Kim, you spent a lot of time, I think, with your family at Harvey Park over in Cedar Hills, and their basketball courts are well-used.
Well, I mean, you go there at 10:00 PM at night, and.
And they're playing basketball.
Which court? Harvey Parks.
It was one of my friends on the, in Cedar Hills, who said they were surprised we didn't have any.
Yeah, the basketball courts there.
Because they're the most popular thing they have.
See, when I go up, when I go up to Alpine, that basketball court's not used at all, because I mean, it's just.
It's a bad location.
I agree, it's hidden, and you don't see it, and, so, okay.
I mean, I know, I talked to Cedar Hills about Harvey, and they basically said, they looked at our plan and said, you need basketball courts.
Okay, is the, so the council, I heard that's a yes to move forward with basketball?
Yes.
Okay, now let's go to gap number four, is there anything we need to, we have the ninja course on there for 151.
That's fun. That's, yeah.
I think that would be fun.
I think.
If we can fundraise for it, that, I think, it'd be great.
I would fundraise for it, but I think it'd be great.
Because we don't have anything in that area.
Right.
Yep. Okay, now from my understanding, ninja course, is it kind of like an exercise area, or is it like where you have those areas you're trying to climb up thing, I mean, is this like what you see on the ninja warriors, and they have all these different activities, or is this more of an exercise where you go and?
It's a ninja warrior course, you run through to test your skills in these different areas.
So this is a little old, this, this is where you talk about the age gap, this, this is for the little older kids.
This is for teenage-ish.
Okay.
So teenage, young adults, people that are younger.
Teenage, young, I mean, adult males use it, I'll be honest, but I think it's one of the more popular parks in St. George, they have one there, and it's, it's pretty crowded.
So I think that's nice to add something for another age group.
Okay.
Because our, our playground area is pretty.
Do we keep this, I mean, are we saying we are funding the ninja course with our funding at this time? And I understand we're going out for fundraising.
Yes.
What we're seeing is our funds, we're including a ninja course.
Yes. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's what we understood, okay. Gap number five, there's nothing. Okay, our favorite one is turf baseball field for 500,000.
Well, and if it's okay, Mayor and Council, I, if we want to talk about this now, we can, really, this gives us enough direction to move forward with the next two action items, and we can have this as a discussion item later, because I think it'll take a while, but depends on if you want to talk about it now or wait.
Are you talking the turf field?
The turf and the surf soccer, the information we've gotten there.
So is it listed in our discussion items?
It is.
Let's do it then.
You were saying, do it when it comes up on our discussion items instead of writing?
Yeah, rather than do it twice, yeah, because we would.
Kelly, can you go forward one more for me? So I want to make sure I've gotten all the questions answered, I intended, okay, yes, so we talked about our revenue sources, and the decision on unfunded items, so, so in addition to, so you'll see the next, the couple items Andy has will approve moving forward with the phase one priority stuff, and moving forward with gap three, we'll also start working on moving forward with gap four, and then we'll come back to you with some more information for the remainder in the future, based on our later discussions, okay? And in terms of fundraising direction, do I understand from Council, we, do we still, so, go back one slide for me, Kelly. So if you look at the bottom here, we're about, now with the new million dollars tonight, we're about a million dollars short, if we did everything on the list, and that does not include the 500,000 dollar donation that we're expecting, and so you might be only half a million dollars short again if you did everything on the list.
Including turf?
Including turf. And so if you didn't do turf.
And paying for the soccer field.
You've got it paid for. Is the direction from Council, do we still want to actively pursue fundraising even if we have enough funds for this park?
I think so, you've got that brochure, there'll be a lot of people that donate 25 bucks, I think there's a lot of small ones, but I think if we have what we've talked about, there might be some big donations come in, because there are a number of people in this city that have been very successful, I'd be surprised if we couldn't raise some money.
But also, it's a community park, so we want the community to be involved, we want them to be able to have a sense of belonging to it, but it's a huge deterrent on vandalism as well, when you have that kind of ownership of a park.
Exactly right.
Let's go through, because we're now going to be, with tonight being the sixth, let's go through some things that we put in place, and which, that's, agree if we want to move forward as the fundraising this way. At this time, we have reserved on October 20th, Thursday night, the Alpine Country Club to do a big kind of donor night, where we'd have different, we'd maybe break it up in two different sections to have donors come in, we'll have all the boards there on the playgrounds, all about the park, it's really our time to try to solicit donations, we're going to try to get people to come in, and it's the, the time to say, hey, this is what you're donating for.
Mr. Mayor, is that going to be just for residents and individuals, or will that be organizations such as, like the Adobe Philanthropic?
We, we, we thought we'd kind of maybe do one at 5:30, that maybe our local Highland residents, now we might need to put some money out there for some little finger foods or some drink, you know, something.
Well, we definitely needed to do that, yeah.
Yeah, there's something, and, and we can, and then maybe we have more of a corporate or different type of donors come in at 7:00 or whatever, so we can break it up to have two different areas.
That's, that's a great idea, because you were mentioning that if we were able to get donations, significant donations, there were funds here that could be reallocated back to other categories, so it, it almost seems like a no-brainer.
Yeah, I agree.
So I mean, what.
I think we should at least try.
Well, no, I think we ought to go try, and, and I, and if there's big donors, they don't have to necessarily come to that, that event on October 20th, we'll, and, you know, we'll, we'll take the time, and I think we all would, you know, if there's some people trying to donate. Now, how much do we want to get out before, do we want to try to do, do we want everything to be on that night of the 20th? And we can talk later about this detail, if you want to start thinking on it, do we want, at one time, Scott, we talked about doing a mailer to the whole city about some of the things they could donate for, you know, and then we would send out special limitations for the 20th to our influencers. How much of a marketing do we want to go for this?
You know, I would do the mailer, and now that there's other ways that you can donate, like to the foundation or the city, whatever, I think we ought to do the mailer, because I think if you go into the big donors and say, hey, we've already raised some money, we've got all these people have donated, you know, why don't, I think it can be kind of like, yeah.
Once you have a couple of donations, it helps, and feel, like we always said, you're comfortable, because you know you're not, you're not, you're not the one person, you know others have also donated.
Yeah, especially if we get a couple of big ones that are already committed.
Okay.
But, yeah.
I agree with Scott.
I say, send out the brochure as soon as we can, yeah.
Great, I think the more time you give people and the heads up and have that date on it, and also give a couple of ideas, because I think some of the youth in the city might even do a little fundraiser, eliminate, stand out.
Well, so we've had Wes, that's kind of, Wes has put together a little flyer, we need to kind of maybe start, you know, Kim had kind of worked on some stuff, we need to kind of start getting that, if we're going to put a flyer out, we've got to get that fine-tuned down as a marketing package.
Yes.
To go out, do we still want to work with Wes on that, to kind of get that put together?
He's the expert, I would love to use his design skills.
Okay.
So I'd say we'll fine-tune that based on, and with what Councilmember Rodela prepared, and now that we have final numbers as to what things will cost, right?
Right. So should we have something, do you think we can have it by the 20th in two weeks? Have a little bit what people can kind of see, might be a rough draft.
We can probably have a rough draft at that point. My, my intent, well, depending on how big this is, is this something we're intending to go out with a newsletter, or separate from the newsletter? Just thinking about that printing.
I would probably do it separate.
Okay.
And if it's a big, kind of flashy, eight by, yeah, I think people, it would catch people's eye.
Okay, yep, we'll, we'll get something prepped for the 20th for you then, Mayor and Council, and plan on bringing it out.
But it needs to be on the website, it needs to be everywhere.
Absolutely, needs to be a mass communication.
We'll start working, is there council members that want to kind of work with, towards that, to help us with that fundraising? I've had Scott and Kim involved, are there others that feel like they'd like to be involved? I mean, if we do, we're going to have to have a notice of a meeting if we have more than three of us there, what's the feeling of the council, how they want to move forward with that fundraising? I mean, now on the 20th, I think all of us need to be there, just if you can kind of think about that night of the 20th and start.
The 20th of October.
20th of October, Thursday night.
That's six weeks, basically, six, seven weeks, yeah.
So that's kind of what we're gearing towards, is there other, are we okay to have, is Scott and Kim, are you okay to kind of work towards that?
I can kind of firm up all the contact stuff for the foundation, if you want.
Brittany, Sarah, Tim, do you feel like you need to be involved? We could notice it as a meeting if we need to, to go, all get involved, or are you okay just having two council members, what's the, tell you?
I'm fine with Kim and Scott doing it, but I'm also happy to help, if there's a meeting one of them can't go to, or if there's anything I can do on the side, I'm happy to help.
Do you think Miranda could help out with the October 20th event, just?
There's some news about Miranda I need to share with the council.
Oh, cool.
Should we share now, later, when do we want to share?
Unfortunately, Miranda has asked us to look for a new person to fill her position, so, not unexpected in my opinion, but between schoolwork and other obligations, this job has become too much for her to handle. She's, lives in Provo now, is going to school full-time at BYU, and so I was worried this would happen, to be honest, and events take a lot to do, and she's a bit burned out from doing it, and so, you know, she, Miranda's worked on and off for us for probably five years in different capacities, and she's very, she expressed her condolences and very sad to leave us, but it's the best decision for her. So actually, it's a similar situation with Shelby, who is the events assistant, so we are looking for a whole new events crew as of this week.
All right. All right.
Wonderful.
So we're going to need all some, have some help here, so, if that's okay. We'll see what we all can do. So if all of us can kind of do that, okay.
I'm happy to help on the 20th, Kim.
Okay.
Yeah. I think we could all have an assignment.
I can help with whatever.
Yeah, okay. I think we'll just sign, bow out.
I can do budget and we can do it.
Okay. Anything else we need to go through before we move to, that's the communication. We have some action items for, item number six on is our action item.
Yep, I think we're ready to move forward with the action. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
You want to look across the sources, we went through it, then if we have a motion?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, thank you, great to be with you tonight. Aaron did a great job of going through these sources with you. So as, by way of review, this is based on your feedback from prior discussions. Want to make sure that we align the accounting with, with your direction and your desires for funding the park. So you can see on, this is the first of three slides really going over again what Aaron just discussed with you. It includes fund balances that are currently in the city's funds. It also includes some projected revenue for fiscal year '22 and '23. As we review this, if you pay attention to the items highlighted in blue, these indicate items that staff would like to transfer to Park's capital fund, again, to align with, with your direction. And make the, the understanding and the assessment of, of funding more, more clear. So here, any questions in particular on any of these items?
So if we transfer all of these, can we put in a stipulation that if we have fundraising, there'll be certain things that get reimbursed? I, I mean, there's been a little distress on the Council about, we keep appropriating money for trees and it never happens or sometimes we have funding, sometimes we don't. I think, I think there's a need to have some replacement of trees and, and trees redone. I'd like to see that reimbursed pretty quickly. And then we talked about the Park Capital Fund, if we raise some money, reimbursing part of that. Is there a way we could just kind of stipulate that? Because most of these things, I think, are not hard things to transfer over.
Sure.
But, you know, what do you think, Brittany, on the trees?
Is there a concern if we move and Rob, do we need to have a part of a motion that there's fundraising that some of these won't be there? Or are we okay and then we can always say, hey, that funds we pull back because we have fundraising?
As, as the, you know, the Council moves forward, you can figure out which pot of money things are coming from later. So I think you just give the direction and then if we need to pull back from one source, we can absolutely do that as we get donations.
Yeah, the questions, are we ready for a motion?
Just reviewing those items in blue, specifically those are the ones that, that staff would like to transfer.
Now, when you have down there Highland Foundation transfer, that's not really something you have. That's a donation they would bring in.
Right, transfer or, excuse, thank you, Mayor. Transfer or as those funds become available, that we would, we would allocate that specifically to the Park's capital.
I can talk to the foundation and then get a check.
Well, I can talk to that private donor to get that put together.
Right. So do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I'll make that motion. I move that the Highland City Council approve the use of the sources identified in blue by staff to fund construction of Mountain Ridge Park and authorize the staff to transfer the funds in blue to the Park Capital Fund as noted.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Scott, second by Sarah. Are we ready for vote? If there's no further question, discussion.
Scott, let me make sure I understand your motion, sorry, before we reveal. So you, you said in blue a couple of times.
Well, in blue is, is what you've delineated. On our sheet, it's in blue.
That needs to be transferred.
They're transferred.
But you are okay with everything that we've listed being spent on the park.
Yes, yes, everything that's in blue.
Stephanie, do you feel okay about that, with the motion he gave?
Or do you want me to go through and list each one?
No, I just don't think you need to. I don't, sorry.
I'd be happy to.
Tyler, go back one, or Kelly, sorry, go back one screen, so.
Mine's blue.
No, you have a white area though here, Scott.
But approve the use of the funds identified by staff. I don't think you want to say in blue in that phrase, because there's some.
A dollar amount?
No, just don't say in blue.
The reason is some of these aren't blue.
But we're planning on using those.
Are we taking funds out of here that are not in blue? I thought the ones we're transferring, the ones in blue.
But this motion also approves you telling us that we can spend the ones that are not necessarily in blue on the park.
Well, maybe we got to go through and delineate each one then.
Okay.
So, because I think now we're confused. So we're talking about the street tree account being transferred, the Patterson donation, the city in the city for 10,000, the ARPA funds for 2.269373, the Park's tax, 135, the reimbursement for 6,800 West for 550,000, the remainder of the town center exaction fee, 300,000. And depending, I mean, this is an open one, the fiscal year '22 general fund net ECOM, we don't know how much that's going to be.
Correct, we're, we're reviewing that currently.
So we really shouldn't transfer that, we know what it is.
Correct, I don't think you should put that.
Okay, and so fiscal year general fund net revenue, 400,000.
So you didn't do anything with the fiscal year 2022, that is not.
Well, there's no set amount.
Correct, you have no dollar amounts, that's not part of it.
Okay, so that's, so Aaron's right about not saying the blues. Okay, general fund balance, 750,000. Potential private donation of 100,000 can come in as well as the Highland Foundation donation of at least 45,000. And then is this the Park's capital fund balance that you want to transfer over as well, that we've discussed?
So no need to transfer that, that is.
That's already there.
That is that fund.
We're just giving approval to use it.
Correct.
Okay. And then the American Ford Debris Base and Landscaping Funds for 104,558. Does that make it more definite?
That clarifies the motion. Sarah, are you still seconding that motion?
Yes.
I'm wondering if for simplicity of the motion, and just to be sure we didn't miss anything, can you show what the proposed motion was, Tyler? I'm wondering if we, if we can use that motion but say, except for the fiscal year '22 general fund net revenue, because it is pending closeout and we don't have a final number for that.
I'm okay with that because I read the motion from there and I, the only disagreement was is when I said the items listed in two proposed by the staff.
Right, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, okay, so this motion is doing two things. It's telling us we can use all of this money listed, including in the white and the blue. And then it's saying, and but go ahead and transfer everything that's in the blue to the Park's capital fund.
Right.
And when you said, I, maybe I'm incorrect, but I think you said sources identified by staff to fund the construction of Mountain Ridge Park in the blue, that in my mind discludes all of the white, which we don't want to do, I don't think. And I'm sorry, I'm probably making this way too complicated.
Okay, so I'll tell you what we're going to do, is we're going to have somebody else make the motion.
I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
I move that the City Council approve the use of the sources identified by staff to fund construction of the Mountain Ridge Park and authorize staff to transfer funds to the Park's capital fund as noted, except for the.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year 2022.
Net revenue.
Net revenue closed.
Yes.
Now I have a motion by Sarah, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Kim. So this motion's now by Sarah, second by Kim. Are we ready for vote? That passes four to one. We'll now move on to item number seven. It's a contract of Mountain Ridge Park change orders. I believe we have Andy.
Thanks, Mayor and Council, I apologize. I was just getting the advance button there for the show. So just as a reminder, where we've been, earlier this year on April 19th, we awarded Phase One to Stratton and Brought Landscapes. And then here a couple of weeks ago, we went through basically the presentation we just went through to kind of talk about potential sources and potential expenses to go ahead and finish the park. And so as a reminder, this is our Park Master Plan, the one that we're working from. And I know that we just all spent a fair amount of time staring at these, this colorful map. It was our way on the staff's side of expressing graphically, a way of progressing through the different construction phases, trying to figure out, you know, at what point we could, you know, our, our revenues could, could support. And so we apologize about chopping it up into so many different chunks, but we just weren't quite sure where we were going to land as far as, you know, what, what funding was going to be available. And so that, which is reason that we kind of segmented it into so many different phases. So we're going to talk about a recommended change order. And so I will highlight that what I heard from earlier with being comfortable adding the additional million dollars out of Park's capital, the potential motion that we're going to look at took us all the way through finishing contract area one. It took us through adding the purple, which is gap one, adding the orange around the baseball field, which was gap two, adding the gap three, which is the red around the pickleball areas. And the next item that we'll look at is a potential contract with the pickleball contractor. But it did not contemplate at that time moving forward with the green area, which was gap four, or the blue area, which is kind of that southernmost ring and the kind of the area that's kind of the leftover area between the baseball field and the soccer area. What I heard, listening to the funding discussion, was that the Council may, with, with deciding to use that extra million dollars, the Council may want to go ahead and fund that, that fourth area or the green area and then wait to see how things kind of come together with surf to then make the decision on the, on the blue, is kind of what I heard. But you can correct me if you feel differently. So I just want to go through the change orders. One of the, one of the difficulties on this has just been keeping the terminology straight. So these, these, what we're turning, the contractor terms and change order pending request, so that's C-O-P-R. So C-O-P-R number two would be the grading and drainage changes that we discussed and also providing the footings and the concrete pads for the pavilions. Change order three would be the electrical modifications to accommodate the stage and vendor areas and the food truck areas and the installation of the pickleball area lighting. We'll buy the pickleball area lighting fixtures itself from the state under a state contract, but the contractor will install those, those lights. Change order four would be changing to the ziriscape along the frontage. This is all kind of that Phase One white area. Next, next page, we're going to talk about the gap areas. So these are the description of the gap areas, you've seen the map, probably save everybody's time going through those. This is what we had suggested on the staff's side, knowing what we thought we knew coming into the meeting. This took us all the way through approving the change orders for the primary phase and added gap area one, two, three, and added some contingencies. So that was for a total of 1,928 and 635 cents. These are just the portions that, that Brought would do, which is basically all the areas. And the reason why we turn them gap areas is because they were an area that was a gap in scope. So we didn't have anybody under contract particularly or donating those areas. If we chose to add that green area, I have a new total for you that I could read for you when you're, if, if you want the, the motion, but that total would be 2,202,000, I got to just say the number, 2,207,776. That would be 2,207,776 instead of the 1,1928,000. So the suggested motion had to contemplate that we'd only be comfortable going forward this evening through gap three. And with that, there is your suggested motion. If you did want to do that green area, that included the ninja course, then in your suggested motion where it has 1,928,635, you would change that to the number that I provided and I have provided at the time of the motion. And you'd also direct us to include gap area four. And just a point of clarification is, again, this is just for the landscaping con, concrete areas and the next item will contemplate the actual courts, which are very specialized contractors to build just the court areas or just those areas that were identified in yellow on the map. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So let me just kind of clarify in my mind, because obviously I need some help on this tonight. But what was the original contract with Stratton and Brought where we have to make 2 million dollars worth of, of change orders? I, I'm just kind of, it's kind of like we didn't include all these areas in the original contract.
Right, so, so, and the Mountain Ridge Park has gone on a long time before I got here and I realize there's a lot of history for, for a number of years, right? But the way I understood it, and, and I know the way I followed it, I mean, some of the discussions, I know I wasn't privy to, but there was a thought that, you know, there was still some discussion going on as to, you know, what playground was going to be, would there be a baseball field? Would we do the deal with surf? And so in an effort to get something moving forward, we said, okay, well, let's break out the white area, the area in white that's on the, on the map there, the parking lots and the frontage and kind of the primary utility backbone.
And that's what they contracted for.
That's what the contract's for and kind of to get the ball rolling, if you will. Now, all that we're coming back and looking at for the additional 2 million is, is the various colored areas to fill in, fill in all the, what we've turned the gaps.
So did we do competitive bidding or we just went ahead with Stratton and Brought?
At this point, because we have them under contract, we've asked them for change order prices and asked them for the supporting details and, and we feel good about those. It does get very complicated when you get multiple contractors on the site and they're building right next to each other. We are happy if that's the direction of the Council to go back and competitively bid these. But in, in, you know, practicality, it's, it's going to be a lot more straightforward to just be working with the one general contractor for it.
So you feel really comfortable with this? Because this is also the firm that wanted to charge us 1,000 dollars for every tree replacement in the city. So I'm just wondering if you feel comfortable.
Yeah, I do feel comfortable with it. If you recall, we did actually have a second bid at the time of the trees and Brought was actually the lower of the two.
Right.
You know, and so I do feel comfortable that, that we are getting a competitive price out of Brought.
But that brings me to my, you know, our first contract was 2.1 million. Now our change order is, you know, 1.9, you know.
It's 4 million dollars.
And I'm going, okay, and this could be the best bid. And I'm, but I'm going, so Andy, this is where I guess, I'm, I think this is where Scott's asking, I, I support that, is how do we know we're spending another 1.9 that this is competitive? You know, we recognize, hopefully the market's kind of peaked and come down a little bit or is still coming down. How do we know we're got competitive bidding? I mean, it appears this is, I'm going to be broken, in the contract world, how you make money is change orders. You know, and, and, and I'm not saying this company, but that's, that's always, it's like, hey, I built right here. You got any change, I'm going to nail you. How, and is there enough, the question I have though, is I see that there's credits back on here. So if you go, hey, we want to have someone else bid it, is it that we have so much already going with this Brock's company, it's hard to have someone else kind of come in because you're really kind of married to these guys because they're already doing all your, your groundwork and it really doesn't make sense for anyone else, does that make you?
That's, that's really the case, is it doesn't make sense for anybody else because then you got one contractor on top of the next contractor. You're, you're, you're absolutely correct in that the only way that I can guarantee you that you're getting the best bang for your buck would be to competitively bid everything, right? But it would get very complicated to back up and say, okay, you know, Brought, we're going to build Brought here and we're going to put in, you know, Company B here, right next to each other. But, but they're not exactly right next to each other. There's a lot of this that underlies each other, like Brought, Brought's bid for the electrical is through the purple area, if you will. We talked about earlier that the, you know, the electrical backbone is right by the bathroom. Well, all, all the electrical systems and, and the electrical systems that distribute to the different areas of the park are, are underneath those other areas. So it, it is going to be very complicated if we bring in an additional contractor. We are certainly willing to do whatever the Council tells us you want us to do and there, there's no resistance on our part. But from, you know, project management standpoint, yeah, it's going to be pretty complicated. And so we did look to Brought and said, okay, you know, let's work through the change orders and let's, you know, get the design updated to, to reflect everything that the city wants and, and get the pricing from Brought. We felt like they were, have had a lot of integrity with us in the pricing they give and that they've held their, you know, that, that competitive bidding that, that they won the bid by. But I can't guarantee you that without, without putting out a bid, right?
So Council, that's a good question. What do you want? I mean, you can. I mean, you can see that down here, that they have a credit down for two hundred and seventeen thousand from the original contract, because they're, they're kind of starting to overbid, bid each other. It's a really hard process, because they're already in the, in the process work, but you gotta bring another contractor. I mean, I imagine they're not electrical contractors, so the.
No, they have an electrical subcontractor, they do, but, but they manage it all right. They're kind of the G C of the park, if you will. They do all the landscaping themselves, all the excavation themselves, but they, they have a concrete subcontractor, an electrical subcontractor, but, but they, they will be directing the, you know, kind of collective construction.
I'll, I'll, go ahead.
Normally, I would say competitive bid, but it makes a lot of sense just to stick with the same contractor in this case, I think.
I, I agree with Sarah. I just wanted to say, I've known the Brot's for years, actually Stratton's have bought out the Brot's. They're not as involved directly. But I do know that they got the contract to do, redo Temple Square, so apparently some people think they're pretty, have a lot of integrity, so hopefully that's true.
So, council, are you okay moving forward with this? Or would you rather go out and get another competitive bid? We've heard for two, they're okay going forward, what's the rest? You wanna, it is a lot of money. I just don't know, like Andy's saying, you have another bid coming, it, they kind of, intertwined with each other.
Yeah. It's a little difficult. Once you, once you kind of award that main piece to one contractor, it's pretty difficult unless you completely finish that work and bring someone in after the fact, but to have them going concurrent, very difficult.
Now, when the lands, now, when they're saying the landscape irrigation, is this for the whole, everything, or this three hundred thousand is only for gap number five?
Uh, they, we had the gaps broken into, so in each gap area, sorry, keep going between the motions and the gap.
You're telling me the blue area is three hundred thousand dollars to do?
Well, that's for the concrete, for the landscape, for the irrigation, for the grading. It's, it's the collective there.
The trail?
Uh, yeah, it's got that concrete, it includes that concrete trail.
And is it gonna be concrete, or is it gonna be asphalt? Because a lot of people at the, the park days that talked to me, and they wanted to make sure it was gonna be asphalt, so they could run on it.
Right now, it's all concrete. We can certainly swap that out to asphalt, but it's all concrete kind of surrounding the pavilion and everything. That exterior trail, right now, is contemplated as, as concrete from a maintenance standpoint. It's got a lot more longevity, but I do recognize that.
Renters don't like to run on concrete.
It's a little bit hard on the knees when you run on them. And certainly, we can, I think it would be, well, actually, you know, we can really do the whole thing in asphalt if you want. I was gonna say, it, it makes a lot of sense to do, you know, the trails up by the pavilions and everything that way in concrete, and if you wanna do asphalt, do the exterior ring in asphalt, but if you, if you really want asphalt, we can actually, we could change the whole thing to asphalt, but it's all contemplated as concrete right now.
And I, and it's hard, 'cause here we are changing, but I do think what we're talking about's asphalt, at least on the outer side, I think, as you get.
On the, on kind of the blue and green asphalt, what you're thinking, yeah?
But, yeah, it's just.
Yeah, I do asphalt there. It's just if you're gonna run, we're gonna have the fun club there, run club.
Now, I have, okay. So, gap area number four is gonna cost four hundred, or two hundred thousand for landscape and irrigation.
Yeah.
And then you got another, almost three hun, two hundred and ninety thousand for gap area number five, landscape and irrigation. I mean, where, where?
It's, it's a little bit surprising, the amount of money that we're talking about for those areas, I agree. It kind of, when you collectively understand the park's gonna cost, you know, eight to nine million dollars, you kind of internalize that, but then when you stop and break it down into the component parts, the component parts are a little bit tough to realize, boy, that's, you know, a lot of money just for that little blue, what, what appears to be a little blue area on the map. The reality of it is, it's quite a large area, you know, taken collectively, but on the map, it looks like a little, a little, little teeny area, you know, if you will, on the map.
So, council, where are you at on this?
So, in the motion, it just goes through gap four, we don't have the money to do gap five?
Well, what I would recommend, the, 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 the motion contemplated only going through gap three, 'cause we didn't know how the council was gonna feel about that extra million dollars from the park's impact fee. But what I would recommend is that we, if the council's so inclined, we go through gap four, and, and, and again, I apologize, keep going back and forth between the motion and the, and the map, but just to go back here, so gap four would be the green area, so that basically we'd do everything except for the blue area. And then, when we get things solidified, you know, with the soccer field area, and at that point, we'll probably know where some of these donations have come in and some of those other things, we'll know where F Y twenty-two ended, we could certainly come back and add in gap area five. But, and not that, not that I know that we really wanna talk about it, we wanna do it, but at the same time, gives us a little bit of time to finish things up with SURF, and, and then we know we're going solid with all the green area, we're going with the baseball field, we're doing everything kind of, baseball field and green towards the two roads, towards the east, towards fifty-six, and towards the north, towards ten four hundred, and, and then we work through things with SURF, and then come back and look at where we landed with our donations and with our F Y twenty-two, and then, and then look at the blue.
So, how much money, I mean, 'cause if we change the motion here?
Yeah.
And add in four?
Yeah.
How, how much money does four, 'cause one, two, and three comes to one point nine million, how much more is four?
Your total on four is, I'll read it to you again, I'm gonna go the motion, so the total on four, I added it up, just thinking that's where we're going, your new total would be two million two hundred and seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Okay.
That would be your motion if you wanted to do four.
And so, tell, show us where that extra four doll, like, where number four, is it, is that landscaper added, the two ninety-nine?
Do you want me to read the motion, what it would be if we added four?
No, I think we can figure it out, I just wanted to know the exact, I was confused on how much four was costing.
Yeah, four's costing us another two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars.
Okay. That's a new sheet.
To, to, to Brot, and then there would be the expense of the ninja, ninja course and the other things that were in the, in, in the Aaron's breakdown.
I was gonna say, so if you're trying to match up the numbers Andy has versus the numbers I presented, they're not going to match entirely, because, like he said, this is for Stratton and Brot's portions, not for some of the extra things, right? Like the contingency numbers, or your garbage cans, or things of that, or, no, excuse me, not garbage cans, like the engineering and construction management, so they don't exactly match up.
And the ninja course, yeah.
But the intention is, we would move forward through gap four with this motion, if.
But if we make a motion for two million two hundred and seven thousand dollars seven seventy-six, that's gonna cover what you need?
That'll cover what we need with Stratton and Brot through, through.
But the garbage can, some of this other stuff will come later. So, it's kind of, it's just a little confusing, because.
Yeah. Yeah, this, this, this particular motion is what, with what we feel would be appropriate to contract under the Stratton and Brot umbrella. And then, like, the ninja course, you know, we'd come back and we'd contract that separately with, you know, a playground company, if you will, that, that's a good example there.
I'm ready to make a motion then. I move.
No colors.
I move that the city council approve the contract with Chain Runner West Stratton and Brot Landscaping LLC for C-O-P-R numbers one, oh, numbers two, three, four, and gap areas one, two, and three, and including four, in an amount up to two million two hundred and seven thousand dollars seven seventy-six, for the Mountain Ridge Park project and authorize the interim city administrator to execute the contract documents.
I'll second it.
Motion by Brittany, second by Scott. Any further discussion? I guess the party started to vote.
Oh. I had one question. Why, why are we allocating a fifteen percent contingency fee? 'Cause the next motion on the next company is just ten percent. I was just curious. You probably explained that, but I.
Yeah, and, and across the board in budgeting for this, as Aaron indicated, we were stretching so thin, if you will, that we thought that we ought to allocate a fifteen percent across the board. The next company, we're looking at a fairly narrow scope, we're looking at just the courts, where across the board, we were looking at the whole thing, and we thought we better put in fifteen percent, so we didn't find ourselves short.
So, they necessarily don't know about that contingency?
They don't, they don't get that unless, you know, it, it's justified to us. We don't go and tell them, hey, we got fifteen percent more to spend, it's just, we're allocating those funds and, and we're taking it off the equation, if you will, of how much we have.
We now move on to item number eight.
You'll probably finish.
Oh, I'm sorry, we do, it's five to zero. Guess we had it, five to zero, that motion passes. We now move on to item number eight, contract for the Mountain Ridge Park pickleball and basketball courts.
Okay, Mayor and Council, again, we talked about these a couple weeks ago, and so, we've had a lot of discussion on this today. Just to highlight, so everybody's for sure knows what we're talking about, we're talking about awarding eight pickleball courts and one basketball court located in the areas on the map with the arrows. We did bid this out and competitively bid it, you were provided in your packet with the, the bid results, the lowest was L E R Renear Sports, Renner Sports, sorry, L E R Renner Sports, and with the contingency, you know, we're allocating, or budgeting up to four hundred and twenty-two thousand and eighty-one dollars up for this. So, this, that motion does award the court, the pickleball courts and the basketball courts. It would be possible to just award the pickleball courts if the council was so inclined, but what I heard earlier is everybody's supportive of basketball, so this would, this would be to award all of them. So, happy to answer any other questions you may have.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and go to motion.
I move that the city council approves the contract with L E R Renner Sports Services and authorize a contract amount up to four hundred and twenty-two thousand and eighty-one dollars for the Mountain Ridge Park pickleball and basketball court project, including the base bid and bid alternative one, and authorize the interim city administrator to execute the contract documents.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Sarah, second by Tim. Ready for vote? That passes five to zero. Is there anything else we need to discuss on the, the, the park at all?
Do you wanna do the discussion items we're gonna have later now, Mayor, with, I mean, that might be kind to certain members of the audience, who might be only here for now.
Why don't we go ahead, we're gonna move up. We have a discussion item number thirteen A, which is the Mountain Ridge baseball fields and soccer fields. I thought since we've been talking about the park, let's keep our conversation here, and so, it's okay, I'm gonna move to thirteen A, and let's go ahead and discuss those as it's communication item, and then we'll come back to number nine, so.
So, on thirteen A, so, we're, there's three specific areas, we wanted some direction on Mayor and Council on this. So, the first would be the baseball fields. Kelly, I do have some slides, if you can exit out, I know that's a pain.
Oh, you have different ones outside of this?
Oh, no, 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 you're there, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You're great, okay. So, the, the donor who has agreed to donate the surface grade and install the baseball fields for Mountain Ridge Park has brought us a proposal to do an all turf field, so all artificial turf, no grass, no dirt, wall-to-wall turf in the baseball field. This is a significant cost investment, and so, he has asked for up to a half a million dollars of city contribution. Now, this, well, you know, when we're talking probably a million dollars to do this, he, he is willing to donate the field, from our, our communications with him, he's willing to donate a grass-dirt field, pay all of the costs himself. Alternatively, if the city wanted to do a artificial turf field, he would ask for some contribution from the city, and in addition to that contribution, he would ask for the field to be locked up, meaning that the only way you have access to the field is if you are renting it. The motivation behind this is, because we're talking about a serious cost investment, he would like to see that field well-maintained and not ruined inadvertently by somebody riding a four-wheeler across it, or a side-by-side, or something to that effect. But if you rented the field, you would, you would be given access, but otherwise, it would be locked up to maintain that. So, artificial turf is great from a, well, it doesn't mean no maintenance, it does mean, I mean, we're not mowing. We do, we would have to have water there to cool down the field, just because it does get hot, so right before somebody plays, you sprinkle the field for a little bit to cool it down. We also would need, we're, we're talking to U V U right now, as they have a field like this, but you also need to periodically check it, clean it, so, as, as it happens in sports, sometimes bodily fluids end up on the field, and that doesn't just absorb to the ground, into the ground, because this is artificial turf, so we have to go through and clean things up like that. So, it doesn't mean no maintenance, but it certainly means less watering and no mowing. But overall, we need a direction from the council, number one, are you interested in dedicating some money towards making this happen? And number two, are you, would you be willing to, per his request, lock up the field and only open it to renters?
No.
No to turf and no to lockup?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I think it's our signature park there for kids to play on. When I was a kid, you played in the dirt and grass.
I, I agree with Brittany, I'd no to both.
I also say no. I think we need to keep it open, available for the residents. It's the reason I don't like the SURF deal, and I know that my family, when I was young, we would just play a, you know, game at the last minute, just our family, go out, hit some balls. So, I just can't imagine having this here and having it be locked up. So, and I think with the finances the way that they are, I like the idea of turf as far as, you know, from a watering standpoint, but I, yeah, I'm a no.
I guess when it comes down to it, I'd rather spend money on the soccer fields to make sure that's open to everyone, instead of turf or the baseball field.
Okay, so I'll tell the donor that we're not interested in moving forward with a, an all turf field, that we would prefer a traditional baseball field that can be more open to the public.
Let, let me just ask this, if he offered to put in all the turf, does that change your opinion, if it wasn't?
If it wasn't locked up?
No, well, if you, if he paid, I mean, for all the, the turf and it was locked up, I mean, is it the dollar, is it the lockup, is it all of above?
Are you talking about artificial turf?
If it's locked up, what, what good is it to us?
Well, no, I'm just, I was, I just wanna make sure if it's all.
I would, if he offered to pay for the turf and have it be open, I would be, I would say yes. It's not the turf for me, it's the lockup for me.
I think he wouldn't put the turf in without being locked up, 'cause he doesn't want it damaged, does that make?
Yeah, and I can understand his point of view for sure.
And we can ask them, like, if we put it, I mean, 'cause I think the main motivation is vehicles driving on it, so if we put some bollards or some, you know, some things to keep vehicles out, okay, is council willing to dedicate money to make this happen, if it was open?
I would say no.
To people, okay.
I mean, if we had fundraised enough money to make sure we can play for the soccer fields, and then as, you know, extra money, pay for turf, I would do it, but I definitely like want an opening. I mean, it doesn't have to, I, I've seen other baseball fields.
For people to walk through.
Just for, there's an opening at the dugout, people can still get in, it's, you know, door-sized opening.
I guess I was, the donor might say, hey, I'm willing still to put turf in, as long as you put some, you know, hindrance. I guess I wasn't thinking the city was gonna go pay for the turf. You know, is it maybe if he offered to put the turf in, would it be the city meaningful to see him some type of, you know, hindrance to try to get vehicles on it?
What does Josh say, Josh say about turf?
Just that it's not going to be maintenance-free, and it's, it is, it will take water, it will take staff. You know, some, he was saying, some teams get to the extreme of, like, they have to look at metal detectors for it, and you have to get black lights to check for bodily fluids, and I don't think that we can get to that extreme all of the time, certainly, but it's, we don't have one in the city, it would be a learning curve in learning how to do this, and it's certainly not maintenance-free. So, you know, I think by, I don't wanna say what his preference would be, unless he's communicated more to you, Andy, but.
Well, I think what Josh just wanted to understand is that, that what, what, in his discussions with the school districts and others, that they've found that while the turf fields, the advantage of the. that they've found that while the turf field's, the advantage of the turf field is you walk on and the field's beautiful, right? It looks perfect, it, it plays perfect, but they've found that there's actually as much or more work prepping the turf field as there is prepping the regular field. There is a fair amount of, what shocked me, and Aaron alluded to it, and I was frankly unaware of this, that there's a fair amount of kind of, I don't know, bad behavior where certain metal objects are kind of put on the turf, you know, so that, those that, you know, like, he tossed out thumb packs, you know. Kids are throwing thumb packs on the turf fields and, you know, and, because they don't disappear, and so you get tackled on the turf field, then you get, you know, a thumb pack in your arm or, or something. And so that's why you have to take the metal detector and kind of periodically scrub the field to make sure that nobody's done any type of, you know,
Interesting.
malice, you know, type of.
Are those college fields?
Uh, he was, listen, he's talking to school district folks and that they're having to do that for a lot of the turf fields.
Okay, so I think we've got the council, yeah, I think we've got the council feedback on the.
Let me just throw something in to, well, I'm a little hesitant about the artificial turf. I, I think it's great, and there's a lot of donation going on here, but it's kind of hard to say, oh, this ballpark here costs a million dollars when we don't put money into Beacon Hills Park and Glen, and the other parks in the city. I know this is supposed to be a signature park, but I, I think it's best just to leave it grass, in my opinion.
Okay. Let's move on to the next item.
Can we cover one more thing on?
Well, actually, two more things. So before you get to yours, next one, we're gonna talk about, I just wanted to give you an update as to where we're at on surf. So, the mayor and myself and council members, I can't remember who, who, we went with surf representatives from surf to discuss their proposal, and so as, as we talked about earlier, the surf gap area, or not the surf, I should say, the soccer field gap area, what it would cost the city to install a field is four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And so to surf's credit, they, they had been getting lots of numbers in a wide range as to what that number is. So we finally feel like we've got a good number for them, it's four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And we shared that number with them last week. They're working on getting us a proposal for, okay, so what is, you know, what is their final proposal? What will they give? Now, again, this is building the field to our specifications. As, as we were talking with surf, it was clear that our specifications were lower than theirs. So they would be spending more money to install it, to, to install it to their level that they would want to play at. But that does give council the buyout figure that you were looking for in terms of what it would cost the city to do that. We did briefly discuss with them an alternative of, we understand that there's been some hesitation, especially to have surf present on this park because it is our signature park, but could there be an alternative where they donate some money here to the city, but then they get use time on a different field like the Lone Peak fields, that are rented, but aren't our signature park, for example. And so we do, we're anticipating a proposal from them this week that we'll bring to city council on the twentieth. Unless we get any different direction from you tonight, I know that there is still some hesitancy on the council to move forward at all, but at the same time, go ahead.
So, Aaron, one of the reasons I lean towards supporting surf doing this is for maintenance. And I, and you're talking about it costs the city if we put this in, but I haven't heard any figures on if it's totally city-owned, how much it's gonna cost the city to maintain it, so that it's kept to a, a high standard. So that was kind of the appealing thing to me, was that they would be maintaining it.
That's a good point, and you're right, I've just included the contract cost, not what it's gonna cost us to maintain for the next ten years.
And last I heard, they were planning on maintaining it while they had the contract, which is several thousand dollars a year, I would assume. Even they had their own equipment and shed and the whole thing. So it'd be nice to be able to look at that as well.
So I know that the city's cost to install the field, it was actually four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, and then you added in the contingency. How much was it if you just seeded it?
Oh, was it?
Hydroseed?
Yeah. How much should we add in for, we'll look up those figures right now.
So, three sixteen, three sixteen to hydroseed the entire soccer field. I'm still against surf coming in, it's an inappropriate place to have it. If you look at any other field that has a private agreement with cities, they never have it at their signature park. Every park department head I've talked to has said they would never put it there, and the areas in which they do have it is usually just a field in an area that is just not very developed.
So with this, we have the plan, I believe it's by, we've asked for their proposal by next Tuesday, just to make sure we have everything when we met with them. Brian, I assume you haven't had any update from them since our last meeting, so we're planning to bring this in. We did pitch the idea to them about maybe going to an alternate field for, you know, some type of donation to the Lone Peak fields. I don't know if that's gonna be part of it, or if they're, you know, where they're at. And so, I assume we're okay time-wise to wait till the twentieth, there's nothing we're needing to move on now on that. Is there any other information you're needing before surf gets here that we need to communicate to them to make sure they bring in the correct information? Scott, you brought up maybe it'd be nice to know what the city believes would be a saved maintenance cost on the area that surf, maintaining it. Is there any other information you're needing?
I, I guess I need to clarify, because we've talked a lot of figures tonight, and obviously I've had kind of a hard time keeping them all straight. But in this money that we've talked about, and the nine million dollars that's possibly there, does that include money for half a million for this, that the city could appropriate?
Yes, so especially if we're not contributing half a million dollars to a, to the base all turf field, yes, the city could fund this. But again, just like fundraising, if you get fundraising money, that means that it's four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. You don't have to spend here, you can spend elsewhere. But I understand that this is, you know, we are talking about use.
But the fundraising would come from surf, is what you're saying, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Because we haven't had anybody else come forth and say, we'll pay for the soccer fields.
No, not, not recently, to my knowledge.
Any other information you're gonna need on this surf information when they come on the twentieth?
Is there enough interest in council to still have surf bring a proposal for Mountain Ridge? Or should we have them focus elsewhere? I don't want them to waste their time, you know, or waste your time.
Well, I'd like to hear, because I understand where Kim's coming from, but I'm really concerned about maintaining the soccer fields. And, you know, I, I'd like to hear what the maintenance costs are going to be. I think it's hard for me to make a decision without having some idea, because that's a lot of grass, it's a lot of grass to maintain. And are we gonna maintain it to some sort of standard, or is it just gonna be a grassy field where people can play soccer? You know, I, I'd just like to know what the plans are on that for, I say.
And we have a rough maintenance cost, but I, I did this back in April, and so I want to revisit those and make sure they're up to date, Scott, so.
Rest of the council, where are you still sitting on, is it worse surf to take their time to come present a proposal for here at Mountain Ridge Park? Knowing that this is what we'd probably be putting in as our buyout numbers, probably right around, you know, four sixteen, three sixteen, or whatever it might be, is our buyout? Or are we saying, hey, no, we'd rather have them look at another fields? Or you, like Scott mentioned, he'd like to see the proposal on the twentieth, what's the rest of the council?
I am super interested in the idea of them using the fields over by Lone Peak, I like that much better, but I'm not opposed to hearing the idea since we've put so much into it. So I'm leaning towards the other field, but willing to listen to the proposal for this and see the maintenance cost.
Are they even interested in using the Lone Peak fields, or is this a decision we're making?
They were interested, I mean, it would require them to start with a field that in their opinion is subpar and do some work into it, but they understood what we were saying in terms of a concern that council has, the perception that we're, we're giving away our premier field, you know, our, to an outside organization.
What I said to them, just to kind of, I said, one of the concerns, so you guys tell me if I didn't share it, right? I go, we're building a premier park that has a two million dollar playground, we have all of our pickleball courts, we have everything there. One of the feelings is that you get to benefit by putting your, your soccer fields in, but all the, all the people who come and use it that are, are from surf users are gonna also be using our playgrounds, the restrooms, you know, every, you know, the pickleball courts.
Paying for the maintenance of all.
But, but at the same time, if it's not them, what they did, just, as I brought that up, they said, well, if it's not surf using it, we assume there'll be other users of the field, and so that same usage will be coming from other users if we rent it out. You know what I mean? So, so I brought it up as a concern, that's where we pitched, they said, to me, I thought the Lone Peak fields was another option, because we don't have playgrounds, we don't have all of our infrastructure over there, we probably don't have, people are gonna be saying, hey, why is someone always on this field, I didn't get on it over there? So you might see a proposal come in both ways, where they come in one for over here at Mountain Ridge, but they might bring an alternate proposal in also for the other field, but that was kind of our, our input, so.
I'm much more interested in the Lone Peak option. I'd have, I think things would have to change dramatically before I would be interested in the, in our other park, but I'm open to hear what they have to say about the Lone Peak.
So, in talking about maintenance though, I think it'd be good, again, as I've said, to have a figure. But then, if we build this and surf moves somewhere else, I want to know how we're gonna pay for that maintenance. And I think it should come from rental fees for those soccer fields. And, and because we can't keep building things and then just let anybody use it from all over the county without some sort of rental fees to help maintain it, because.
But didn't we build that into our budget of hiring an extra worker just for this park?
For the employee we have, but the added maintenance costs, we do have an estimate for, and we planned on putting them in the fiscal year twenty-four budget, because that's really when they're start impacting us.
But you've got a lot of maintenance in this park, you're gonna have a lot of maintenance on the, all the buildings, playground and pickleballs and all that stuff. You'll need more than just one employee, and so if you gotta manicure lawns and stuff, I just want to make sure we're gonna cover our future costs.
Scott, do you feel if we had to go over to Lone Peak, that they could offset the cost to maintain Lone Peak to help maintain some over at Mountain Ridge?
Well, if they play at Mountain Ridge, yes. I, I think anybody that plays there that's an organized team, and we, we're just opening it up to other organized teams to come in, they need to pay for the use.
And it might be, we actually have this field cost a little more to rent because we have more amenities, I mean, it's just.
Right.
Same thing with a, a nice baseball field.
Because you don't have bathrooms over to Lone Peak, right?
We bring in porta-potties for rentals, but they're not nice bathrooms.
They're not nice bathrooms.
I was kind of hearing, Tim, what's your feeling on, you know, the proposal, would you like to have him still come in so you can hear it?
I'm still considering that.
Okay. So let's go ahead and have, we'll have surf bring in, maybe they'll bring two proposals to help out. Brian, does that give you enough information to be able to go back to surf? Okay, thank you.
Lastly, we're gonna talk about butterflies really quick in Mountain Ridge Park. So you might, you might have gotten an email about this, and I'll let Andy fill you in.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I was approached by Highland residents Emma Green and Heidi Burnham. Mostly received the emails from Emma, although in the initial email she represented that, she was representing both her and Heidi, indicating that monarch butterflies are now on the red list, a very dangerous species, and that, that their population west of the Rocky Mountains have dropped, according to Emma, you know, ninety-nine point nine percent in the last twenty-five years. What they are requesting is that we allocate a portion, or a small area of Mountain Ridge Park for milkweed and some nectar plants. The butterflies lay their eggs and the calipers, caterpillars initially feed on the milkweed, and then butterflies feed off the nectar plants, and then in those areas, you can't use, you know, weed spray, or you will kill the, kill the plants that, that they want to thrive on. I indicated to her that I would discuss it with the council, you know, another option I indicated to her as well, I don't know, you know, what we're thinking at Mountain Ridge, one of, I, I'm sorry, I need to back up. One of her primary points was that, you know, milkweed's been along ditch banks and other things at the edges of the fields a lot in Highland, and as Highlands continue to develop, it's continued to go down, and along the ditch bank that's along Mountain Ridge, she's been out and counted, and she said that there were two hundred different stocks of milkweed, you know, is what she indicated. So she felt like we were losing a significant resource there, so I indicated to her that I would visit with the council. You know, an idea is, you know, if we, if we didn't find it something that we wanted at Mountain Ridge, maybe we could put it in some of the other native areas. What she is requesting specifically as a next step is that we did a, a, oh, I'm sorry, I need to, she wants us to register it, but I, oh, she calls them monarch weigh stations, and you register them on a, on a web, on a, as part of a network that's being created. That's kind of a second phase of it, so that, that was her request that we entertain. I did ask her, okay, what's the, what's the smallest area that it could be? And she said, you know, a hundred square feet was an area that was sustainable and would provide a significant, you know, stand of vegetation for the butterflies. Other ideas that I had is if it didn't fit at Mountain Ridge, because I am a little bit worried. Milkweeds, as you've probably all seen along the ditch banks, I mean, they, you know, they tend to be in just kind of the weedy areas and everything. I'm a little bit worried if we have this manicured park and then everybody's just going, well, gee, that city's lousy at maintenance, look at that weedy area over there.
But why does that have to be at Mountain Ridge, like, we have our.
That's my other, that's my other idea.
Highland Glen, you've got all that undeveloped, put it in Highland Glen.
That's, we had the Highland Glen or potentially some of that open space that's along the Mitchell Hollow Trail, you know, there. I mean, those are a couple of ideas where we thought of, when I say the Mitchell Hollow Trail, that area that's just south of the park, where we kind of have that open wetland area, we might be able to put a little bit in there. And, you know, or at Highland Glen, you know, in some of the areas there.
So, I'm kind of sentimental about milkweeds, I must have fifty of them growing in my yard, because I keep hoping a monarch butterfly will come by. Because when I was a kid, we used to go down to our fields that we owned west of Pleasant Grove and find all kinds of them. Used to raise them in the bottle and stuff like that, and next year, I was thinking about purchasing eggs, you can bring them in. And, because I've got quite a few, but it, I'll tell you about milkweeds, they're very invasive. I spend a lot of time pulling milkweeds every year, because they take over your yard if you let them. They're next to the Scottish broom plants, or whatever they call it, we call it snake grass. But I'd say, put this in Highland Glen, you've got a lot of areas in that park which are kind of very native vegetation. It'd be fine if it was milkweed, in my opinion, I don't know, that's what I think.
We have our, where we have all the road-based stuff, maybe in that area down there.
And that was an idea that I did think of, we've got some restorative area, for what you're gonna do there. And that, that was actually where my ideas went to first.
Well, the other thing, when I talked to her, or I emailed and talked, I says, you know, would you be willing to help maybe with some donation to kind of help some of that down? She said, she came back, said that was a good suggestion, so I would still look, I think that Highland Glen area is much more conducive for butterflies and is gonna be more welcoming for them. That's, I'd kind of support what Scott's thinking there.
Yeah.
So.
And I'll donate the plant.
Any, anything else there?
No, I just wanted to make sure I had the sentiment of the council, you know, as I responded.
Anything else on that discussion item on Mountain Ridge? Okay, let's move up to item number nine, this is an action item, it's council chambers AV upgrade change order, this is you, Aaron.
It is, and I'm sorry, we'll try and move through these quickly, Mayor and Council, it's ten thirty, so Kelly, if you'll move forward for me. So, if you remember, Mayor and Council, you, back in July, you approved a contract with GenCom to fix a number of the AV issues with this room. And update, give us, get us to a bit higher level. We did a kickoff meeting with GenCom, and during that meeting, it became apparent that we, that staff felt like we missed some things, and this wasn't GenCom pushing this on us, it was staff realizing, oh, this would be much more helpful if we did X, Y, and Z. So, the change orders they're requesting are on, are not, sorry, that we requested GenCom to provide a bid for us are on the next slide. And so it would be the, as you saw tonight, the lectern mic, we would replace it with an array mic that just, it, it picks up in a wide, wider range. Oh, golly, let's not knock those over. A wider range, and so. And so people don't have to be right next to it when they're standing at the lectern or if you have multiple presenters, they don't have to switch back and forth between who's talking into the mic. It would also add us an annotating screen at the lectern. We didn't think to include that in the original request for proposal. It also, you can't see it, but Kelly's spot has almost no room in it and we're talking about adding more stuff. And so it would add a rack that would sit here and look nice, but it would help clean up some of that area and not make it sit on the staff table where Kelly or whoever sits in that seat is out of space and overflows into the people next to her. Also, the annotating capabilities that we've talked about on the screens, there's three different input sources that you can use. The staff computer will be the main one, but we've also have a couple of other inputs where this would allow them to, no matter what input you're using, you can use the annotation ability. And then finally, it's a small change that they recommended us doing, making it so that I, the audio goes through the computer rather than a phone system. We'll just, again, clear up that quality for any Zoom calls that we need to make. And so in total, those numbers add up to, on the next slide, $10,000, which is outside of the 10% contingency within our purchasing policy, which is why it's back before you, council. So in total, we're looking at a $56,000. That would actually, they would still be the lowest bid, adding that into what the, and comparing it to the original proposals. It does mean we're about $6,000 over budget that we would, if there weren't other funds for, we would need to make a budget adjustment for that.
Unless there's discussion, I'd like to make the motion. Did you want to make it, Brittany?
No, you make it. That's good.
Any change order that's less than a million dollars, I support. Okay. I move that Highland City Council authorize the change orders with GenCom in the amount of $10,788.55 for the council chambers AV system upgrade.
I'll second.
Motion by Scott, second by Brittany. Any other discussion?
That's true.
Let's go ahead and go to vote. Passes five to zero. We now have, move to item number 10, an ordinance, the municipal code amendment of maintenance agreements.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. This, y'all have seen quite a few times, but on July 19th, 2022, the city council did adopt Resolution 2022-27, the encroachment policy and maintenance agreement template. Background, currently in our municipal code, we have a section 12.28 or chapter 12.28 called private maintenance of public open space. It's a very long section that goes, it details the purpose and application process, public noticing requirements, review and approval, as well as appeals of council's decision for the approved maintenance agreement or not approved. And that was adopted back in 2017. So essentially what this proposed amendment is, is deleting all of it and then keeping that same code section. That way, when people are looking in through code, they have a reference to the maintenance agreements. We would, it would keep the same chapter title, but then in the purpose section, we would rename it to just maintenance agreement. That way it's searchable. And then just state that this is actually a sentence from our, the policy saying that the only encroachments that are permitted are those that are specifically authorized by way of a duly authorized maintenance agreement. And then the approval governing policies, process, and form of maintenance agreement are adopted by resolution. That way, if the council ever ends up updating the policy, we don't have to change code. It just references to the current policy.
So does this reference into the encroachment ordinance that we passed?
Yes.
Because that delineates how.
It wasn't necessarily an ordinance, it was an encroachment policy adopted by resolution. So it isn't visible in code, it's a resolution.
So where do they go to find the specifics of how they do the maintenance agreement? Do they just have to come talk to you?
No, so technically, the resolutions are available on the city website. You just have to click on the little code book. If, if you're familiar with the website, they have those like four or five different books where there's development code, municipal code, city council minutes, and then there's ones for resolutions and ordinances. And so the resolutions is where they would look it up specifically. Honestly, typically people just email me asking for it and I'll just send them the adopted resolution. And that's just how it goes.
You have, you know, some of the things already printed up for like fences and all those things. Why wouldn't you do that? Because I find, as long as I've been on the council, I still have trouble kind of going through the municipal code and all these other things because when I put the certain searches in, I never find it. I'm just wondering if we're eliminating a place that they can find the specifics, I just think that they need to be able to find it without having to search all over and get frustrated. Does that make sense? I mean, you have, you have sheets out there with what you can do with fences and what you can do with this or that. Why wouldn't you just have one for the maintenance?
Oh, you're asking, you're saying that I should make a little help sheet for it?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Like on your permit page, right, your applications page, just make a page about helping space.
I can definitely do that.
Yeah, just have a help sheet. This is why you need to do this, is, you know, what can be used for a maintenance agreement. I just think you may, need to make it easy for the citizens because we're going to have a lot of maintenance agreements probably come through.
I can definitely do that.
I'll make a motion. Is that okay? Oh, wait.
Oh, yeah. Go right ahead. Sorry. We, by the way, yeah, we don't hold a public hearing for this because it's specifically municipal code.
Perfect. I move that the city council accept the findings and approve the proposed amendment to chapter 12 dot 28 of the municipal code relating to maintenance agreements.
Motion by Kim, second by Tim. Ready for vote?
Can we put a stipulation in though that Kelly makes a helpful sheet so people?
I, I think she can do that on her own. I don't know if you have to have a motion.
Well, I just think it needs to be part of the deal. I mean, because it's, it's nice to have a little simplified thing on maintenance agreements, but.
I'll do it either way, but it would be reflected in the minutes.
I'll amend the motion that Kelly put a help guide in there.
Put a help, okay. So that motion is amended by Kim. Tim, are you still a second?
Yes.
Okay. That passes five to zero. We'll now move on to resolution. It is a water conservation plan by Andy.
Mayor and Council, if you go back to 1999, the state required cities to develop water conservation plans. Our most recent update was in 2017. We are bringing forward to you an update. The update in large, large percent just provided some updated goals for us. We want to save 20%. Our goal is to save 20% of the, what we would have seen in our peak here a couple of years ago. And, you know, this is also part of our process for receiving our funding from the state. This was our funding award letter from the state for the $5 million that we had to update our water conservation plan. We did actually, as part of that process, have them approve this draft that you are seeing. And so they have approved that and feel like it would meet the requirements of the state. I'm happy to answer any questions, but it is a fairly straightforward matter in that we're just kind of bringing it current with our current policies and current things that we're doing. But if you would like to ask me to answer any specifics about the plan, I'm happy to.
So who authored this? Did you?
Tavas.
I knew it was Tavas.
Tavas Timothy was our principal author.
He did a great job.
Tavas did, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of work.
That's a good job.
Yeah, it is, it is just like, say, an update from what we had adopted in 17, but he also was the author then, so.
So embedded in this is a list of trees that you can use. Who decided on what trees we could use? Because there's some older ones in there that they eliminated.
Sorry. And we're happy to bring that list current. I don't think we actually changed that with the updates, you know, the list of trees.
Well, they eliminated some.
Yeah.
When I saw it, when I read through it.
And I didn't actually think we had, you know, changed those list of trees, but I might be, I might be forgetting. I remember.
Yeah, there were some redlined and eliminated, but, I mean, it's not a big issue. I just was wondering who decided that.
Well, and the, if you, if the redline copy of it in the very back is the copy that we had, we didn't have a clean copy of the city's ordinance, but that was actually the, the, as part of the appendices of the city changing our ordinance to accommodate the zero escapes in the planter strip. So that was actually the council that did that. If, if we're talking about, those last couple pages of it have ordinance 2020-18, that was the council that did that, those changes. And for the final copy, we were going to put in a clean copy. We just couldn't get a clean copy when we were preparing it.
Okay. So they also talk about decreasing water usage by 20%.
That's our goal is by the time we add meters and everything, and if we compare when we're all said and done with PI meters and all our other conservation efforts, our peak appears to be, as we saw from Tason, you know, our peak appears to be two years ago. Last year we came off that peak, this year we're off that peak again. So our goal is by the time we put in our PI meters to be at 20%. Now, this is also seeks to, you know, address culinary issues, right? And if you're replacing your, your faucet to use a more water efficient model, et cetera. But a lot of our savings is going to come, quite frankly, through our PI meters and through our efforts with our exterior irrigation.
Other questions on the, the changes in the plan or for a motion or anything?
Sorry. Can you get me forward to the motion?
I can motion, Mayor. I move that the city council approve the resolution adopting the 2022 water conservation plan update.
I'll second.
Motion by Brittany, second by Kim. Any further discussion before we go to vote? Let's go ahead and go to vote. That passes five to zero. We now have our last action item, which is a purchase contract for the Rhino pumps for the Overwatch sewer pump system. Andy, that's also you.
Mayor and Council, if you recall, a couple of weeks ago, or I guess three weeks ago, we talked about the lift station at the Greens. We call it the Greens Lift Station. It's the Greens on, on the Highlands or something pretty close to that, a subdivision name. But just for a reminder, this is where that lift station is located. It's located right behind the bathrooms at Caddy Lane where the trail kind of comes underneath North County Boulevard there. And what we were proposing is that we use our maintenance monies this year that were allocated for our pumps maintenance in our, in our utility rate study. And we add a little bit of money to it and we change to this Overwatch system. This is one where it doesn't let the, the fluids settle. It just kind of continually pumps. It just pumps at different rates depending on the fluid input. One thing that was asked at the time was, is this going to cost us more money? According to, we gave them our current utility records and according to their study, they believe we'll save money on energy. They believe it's more energy efficient even though it pumps more frequently. And I, you know, that, that's the figures they gave us. I assume that's because there's not as much start and stop, but I really don't, I know beyond what they, what they provided to us, why it's more efficient in that regard. I hate to be, you know, so limited on information, but we had them provide that information and that's what they've given us. I hope it's true because it's nice savings. Whoops, sorry. And so it does require us to add about, and I apologize, I was, we were faster than my computer, my, me turning the pages on my computer to get to this item, but it does require us to add a little bit out of our fund balance. So we have about 70,000 in our, in our budgeting currently. And so it's about 35,000 from our fund balance in sewer fund, but we do believe that it is a lesser cost option than if we were to have to replace these in the future with, with a different system. We priced that system out and it was about 150,000. And so as you recall, we are getting a deal because we're, it kind of be the first one in Utah that has one of these. We did call and interview a place in New York and it was a sewer treatment plant that had them, had problems and they were fixing their, their existing lift station with routine frequency. They put in these and all they've had to do in the last four years was a very simple maintenance element. And so they were thrilled with them.
So don't tell me we could have done this on the Victor View Lift Station and taken care of it.
I don't know. I'm in different situations at the time.
Probably not.
I don't, definitely wouldn't have worked. Definitely wouldn't have worked. I, you know, I, yeah, I, I don't know, Mayor. But here, I'm excited, I'm excited to find a, find a solution that might make us a little more maintenance free here because it's, it's been a little problematic this summer for us.
So what sort of pumps are you putting in the new lift station down in Pheasant Hollow for Ridgeview?
It's, it's, it's a, it's called a dry well system and so we're putting more of the traditional ones that kick on and it has a storage well, but it's got a very large storage well. And it's kind of, the Ridgeview one is the current thinking around here of the best way to build them, you know, if you will. And so it, it has, all of the sewer effluent is stored in what we call a wet well that's outside of the building. And then you go down really, you've seen how deep that is? The pumps sit way down in the bottom of that basement and they pump out of that wet well and lift it out. So it's that wet well storage system that we pump out of. But it, that one's designed to handle a whole lot of flow. As you know, it's designed to handle.
Sure.
A number of homes. And so I don't know that I would have been comfortable with looking at a system like this for that.
So Rhinos are good for a smaller system for replacements, what you're saying?
Yeah, this Overwatch, we, we're interested in the smaller system for the replacement at this point. We're, I, I wouldn't want to throw all our eggs in this basket on a big one like Ridgeview yet. The Ridgeview design is very proven. It's a proven good design. This one's, you know, well, it appears to be good. It's, in my mind, still a little experimental around.
So if it's very successful though, it's an option for future?
It'd be an option that we'd definitely look at for like Highland Hollow in the future and possibly even Dry Creek in the future. But, but I think we'll only know by trying it at one location and, and see how it goes and see if we develop a lot, the confidence that those that we spoke in have it, have it. So with that, I know we're getting late and so I apologize if I'm getting a little long-winded on these. We do have a suggested motion for you, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions before we go to a motion? Okay, let's ready for a motion.
Sarah Martin wants to make it.
I'll make it. I move that the city council approve the purchase contract with Rhino pumps in an amount up to 105,000 for the purchase and installation of the Overwatch pump system and authorize the interim city administrator to sign the appropriate contracts.
I'll second it.
Motion by Sarah, second by Scott. That passes five to zero. Okay, now as we look at our communication items, we'll now move on to 13B, which is the finance department update.
Great, thank you, Mayor and Council. Here are a couple of components here to this update. First, we wanted to kind of bring you up to date on equipment purchases. I like to call this, are we there yet? Harkening to children and what I heard this weekend as we were driving back and forth from St. George. Roy is our, Roy Bond is our fleet superintendent and he's been great this past year dealing with a lot of supply, the supply chain issues and did a, did a good job of getting a number of vehicles in even towards the end of June when those budgets were allocated. These items here that we're focusing on, there's portions of, or in the case of the Jacobson mower, that entire item just wasn't delivered in fiscal year 22. And we understand why that would be. So these items, funding for these purchases was included in the fiscal year 22 budget. And they were ordered as soon as council approved those items, but of course haven't been delivered yet or fully delivered due to the lack of inventory. So in the, in the course of the, the budget approval, council. So in the, in the course of the, the budget approval, council did approve, authorized transfer from the general fund revenues in excess of 35% of estimated revenues to capital funds. We anticipate, of course, that being the case to, to make those transfers this year. That gives us an ability between the purchase authorization and staff authorization from the council to make those transfers, to, to go ahead and move funds into the capital funds to preserve the funding for those purchases and take that from the general fund. So what we have in mind here, the remaining purchases to be included in the fiscal year 23 budget, and we would include those in the mid-year adjustments. For the playground, the, we have spent approximately $15,000. And there's a, a county grant was associated with that. There's a remaining $135,000 roughly. The Jacobson mower, again, that would involve that full purchase coming from a few different sources in the general fund open space to be included there. Snow plows, which you saw that we have some of that equipment now. Erin has taken at least a seat for us in there.
So hold on, did Erin physically drive it or just sit in the seat?
I'm not willing to admit or deny.
Did you hear this, Brittany? They let her drive the?
I possibly read that in the email last Friday and I didn't say anything.
Kelly, keep going, I'm sorry.
So some of that has been delivered here even in the last month or so. But again, in fiscal year 23. Cemetery dump truck, the, the truck itself, the chassis we have, but it's outfitting the vehicle with the, the rest of the equipment. So particularly in the case of the Jacobson mower and the snow plows, that would include transferring from the general fund to the parks and road capital funds to preserve those. So any questions about that? Again, council's already approved.
So there's, there's a couple of things. Let me ask you, on a Jacobson mower, I thought we approved the expenditure at the time we did because it was going to be up in Idaho and it was going to be current that we could also just get it. And that's why we wanted to hurry up and buy it then. But we now see that we don't have it.
It came today.
Oh, it came today. Oh, it's almost.
Long drive from Idaho evidently. I don't know, that's what we were told at the time, but it did actually finally show up today.
Okay.
And that is exactly what we were told at the time.
Okay, now, now the question is Tyler, here we have some budget adjustments. We've been making several. We just did our budget in, in a June for this year. But we've started making several budget adjustments. Is there a way to get a paper? I understand we're going to see those in a mid-year budget adjustment. But we've already started, just like we just did with some adjustments here on this pump. You know, we've already started saying, hey, we're going to amend that budget through that. I just want to make sure we don't get ourselves caught. We've now transferred money from this current budget to go to the park. You know, are you keeping track saying, hey, this is how the budget? And so we make sure that all these transfers also, we don't get to be negative. Does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely. And as soon as the, I don't know if it was before July 1st, but pretty close to that, items that we've started keeping track of that, that will be included on that list and that we're making sure that we're not double counting or double spending any of those funds.
Or even making sure we have the funds when we say we just made an adjustment that we, what, what fund balance? I mean, that might be starting to be helpful to start seeing, hey, this is what it is. Even though it's going to be coming up on a vote, just so we can have a, a sense where we're still left in that budget period. Because a lot of times we keep making these changes, but we don't really know what's happening.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm confused too. Because if we, if it was in the fiscal year 22 budget, but we're paying it in 23 by adjusting everything by a half million dollars, I don't understand.
Well, no, this is all going to go pushed into 23.
Right.
But we have the money left over from 22, money's left over from 22 to be spent in 23.
Right.
Okay, so we, the money is actually coming out of fiscal year 22?
Right.
Okay, that's where, okay.
And in the, in the budget world, as soon as midnight hits on June 30th, that budget is, is
Done.
I don't want to say dead, but yes, done. It doesn't automatically carry over. So the mechanism by which we quote unquote carry the, the money over from one
Because we're purchasing them now, so we're just carrying it over. Okay, I understand better.
And in, in the purchasing process, we do not prepay for
You pay when you get them.
Right.
Okay.
So that's, that's why there's, there is a little level of uncertainty as to when payments will occur because we're not going to pay for that until we actually have the item in our possession.
Okay, any other discussions on the financial department? We then move on to our tax amendment on the fence material.
Um, I'm sorry, Mayor. That's the, the first part of, of the update there.
Oh, what else?
And I have here some statements that you received copies of here a couple of weeks ago. We'll ask my colleagues to pass those on down the line.
Look at this.
So again, these are hard copies of what you had received electronically here previously. By way of review, staff is providing on a monthly basis, a summary of revenue and expenses by fund. Okay, also a check register, and that is any, any payments issued by the city for that given month. Finally, updates on sales tax. They'll have some slides here. Also on a quarterly basis, revenue and expenses detailed by account. So this, the fund summary, you have each fund, its revenue and expenses are on the same page. And, but then quarterly will provide very specific detail. Or at any time that, that any of you would like that, we're happy to provide that on an individual basis. So with regard to this, one month into the fiscal year July 2022 statement, observations that we've made, their building and, and commercial related impact fees are higher than you would expect, a little higher than 8%. While residential impact fees, like parks impact fees, were lower than anticipated. We're not panicking or making any year-end conclusions there by any means, just one month in. But just something to note there that there's, where sometimes we would expect all impact fees to kind of follow the same trend, there's a little bit of variation depending on commercial or residential. Also within the general fund miscellaneous revenue is at 22% of the projected total for the fiscal year. Obviously 22% being much higher than the 8% we would expect. That's due to fling, annual fling revenue. And of course, that's just once a year, as well as some rent revenue from the Lompe Public Safety District. And those are paid at the first, the first quarter, or excuse me, the first month of each quarter. So kind of skews a little bit the, the trend there for, for the first month. With regard to sales tax, the revenues we received in July and August, those belong to fiscal year 22 and those, those are moved out and, as part of the closeout process. So fiscal year 23, sales tax does not begin coming in until September. And that's towards the end of the month, around the 20th or 21st.
Now, hold on, revenue received for July and August belonged to the fiscal year 2022. But you told me you close out fiscal year 2022 on June 30th, 20, you know, 2022. So why do they grab July and August?
Because the, the sales tax is collected by the businesses. For July and August, what we received, that is actually received by the businesses back in May and June.
Okay, okay.
A great question. As we look to close out fiscal year 22, sales tax revenue is about $3,662,000. And that will be about 337 above what the budget was adjusted to back in January. With regard to the park tax, specifically the park sales tax, we've received $43,289. Now fiscal year 22, because it was a new source of revenue, the budget was set at zero, not knowing exactly when that would come in. So we received a little bit in May, excuse me, in June, going back to the first month in April when that was beginning to be collected. But the budget there for fiscal year 23 is 135,000. So far, the, the performance of that, of that tax, we look to be on target to hit that. So with that, happy to take any questions you might have.
Thanks for this, I appreciate it. My, I guess my question is, is the last three years, we've consistently had more sales tax come in than what we thought. Are we going to track that and maybe come in with a better or a higher budget number for another year? Or are we just always going to assume that our budget estimates are right? But it's a pleasant surprise to get more, because it seems like consistently we're getting quite a bit more sales tax every year than we think. At least $300,000. One year was, uh, two years ago it was 500, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm. Right, and that's certainly open to council's discretion, as we're adopting that budget. I will point out, as you look year over year, month to month. So for example, June of 22 compared to June of 2021. For a number of years, consistent with the trend you just pointed out, Councilman Smith, we've seen increases every single month. There's been a couple of months here in the last quarter where we haven't seen
An increase.
An, an increase and it's actually dipped a little bit compared to the prior year. Now, one month compared to the, to, to one month in the prior year doesn't necessarily mean anything in and of itself, but it could be an indication of, of the market making a correction there. So it's certainly something that, that we will keep an eye on. And if the trend six months into the fiscal year demonstrates continued growth, then that may be appropriate to, to want to increase the budget for this year, for fiscal year 23, and informing fiscal year 24 to, to consider a more aggressive projection if the council has the appetite for that.
Tyler, didn't you attend to training recently where the state basically said, while we anticipate an increase this year, it's going to be much less significant than we have seen in previous years as well?
Yes, that was with the, the, the county. Attended a meeting with finance directors from around the county. And one of the, the county representatives there had done some extensive research and analysis with, with the state data. And they're expecting, as many other outlets have indicated, some, some slowing. Fiscal year 23, they indicated there will probably be continued growth, although slower than previous years. But a lot of question marks with, with regard to future years generally.
I think we all are aware the markets, you know, the economy's changing a little bit. You know, we've had some inflation. I mean, it'll be interesting to see how we change.
But with inflation
Prices went up.
And prices go up, your sales tax goes up as well
Yeah.
with inflation. But what you assume is people won't spend for as many items.
Right.
To kind of balance it out.
Because it's a certain possibility.
Inflation inflates your sales tax as well.
Yeah. Very interesting things that came out of that meeting with the, the county. A lot of emphasis on car dealerships. We don't have a car dealership here in Highland specifically, but they, they noted a lot of, of growth in sales tax revenue has come from that industry. And there'll be corrections as hopefully vehicles are become, or the, the supply catches up with demand. But a lot of variables that, that go in there and depending on the area and the county and in some specific to Highland that, that may have some, some impacts on future revenue.
Is there any other discussion we have on the financial? Okay, just looking at the time, it's now 11 o'clock or a little bit past. We have still several texts, you'll have the text amendments and so. Is there any of those items that could be moved to another city council meeting versus what needs to be discussed tonight?
I should talk about Waterwise.
Probably Waterwise we need to move forward on, yeah.
So, so we can, we can postpone the fence material?
Yes, that one, it's, it's a staff-driven one.
What about the?
You, I, I'd say we want to give some brief updates to Andy time for the, oh, we especially on the 10-100 north, we need a direction from.
So what you're saying is on the engineering, we need to just give some updates. Let's go ahead and go to 13B, which is tax amendment with CUWCD, Waterwise.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. You should be getting a little piece of paper, sorry. You would have been emailed this a couple of weeks ago just from the Central Utah Water Conservancy District. As far as, basically their letter goes into the fact that, yes, you've probably heard of their programs with Flip Your Strip and Local Scapes that residents can apply for. And then we also have a leadership grant that they allow cities and commercial entities to apply for. That's actually the grant that we're applying for, for Mountain Ridge Park as far as the zero escaping. And the letter notifies us that starting January 1st, 2023, if we don't adopt either it exactly or some form of what is attached, like the second and third and fourth pages in that little packet, then us along with the residents in our city no longer can apply for those grants. Right now, they're still taking applications, but like I said, January 1 is when they'll stop. Just going over a quick summary of what those regulations are that they're requesting that we have included in our code. As far as residential landscaping, this is involving, because we can't regulate backyards, this is specifically for front and side yards. It would require drip irrigation or bubblers everywhere where there isn't lawn. Everywhere that needs to be watered that isn't lawn. And then all of the irrigation has to have the water sense labeled. And then where there is mulch, that you have to have at least three to four inches in that, in the planting beds to prevent weeds. And then those areas have to have at least 50% plant coverage at maturity. And that they're very specific where the grass is planted. It would be no longer in park strips, as well as they say that lawn can't be any, in any walking pathways or slopes greater than 25% or areas where it's less than eight feet at its narrowest point. And so that's where, where our park strips are four feet. We wouldn't be allowed grass in any of the park strips. Again, just clarifying, this would be with new development or when residents are taking out their existing landscaping and redoing it, they would be expected to meet these requirements.
Now, when you're saying expected, is it required that they meet it or is it a recommendation?
It would be adopted in code. Some of the wording on those, there are certain points that are more, this is recommended, whereas others are shalls. So that's what we would be very clear about in code.
Is, is this to get funding though? Because this is a government agency mandating how people do things. I'm not sure if it's not been legislated how they can do that.
Because it's front yard landscaping, technically we can regulate certain zero escaping standards on front yard landscaping. They, like, it, the local scapes for the backyards, residents are, like, it's still available for them to apply for funding for their backyards, but that's not something that we can regulate.
We're only doing this if we want to allow our residents to apply for the grants.
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, if, if we don't, if we don't do this, our residents aren't eligible for those grants or funding at all. That's kind of how this goes.
So do we have to adopt this in code? So that people all have to do this if we get any funding at all in the city? Is that what you're saying?
Not, it's the residents trying to get their Flip the Strip program.
That plus any leadership grants, as in, like I said, the one that we're applying for, Mountain Ridge Park. We wouldn't be eligible for those either if this is not
Right.
adopted in code. That, yeah, starting January 1. We're, we're applying for Mountain Ridge this year, so it wouldn't impact that, but.
Well, I can see if people are going to, you're going to apply for this and get the money to kind of help you do it, and you choose to do this. But I'm not sure that we're at a point where we can mandate all this in the city level, are we?
But the point is, if we don't do this, then they can't apply for the funds. And that's fine, council, if you, if that's the direction you want to do. And it doesn't have to be this exactly, but it would, this is a sample.
Right.
And it doesn't have to be this exactly, but this is a sample and the recommendations that they're putting forward. So if we don't adopt something similar to this, our residents can no longer apply for these grants.
But we don't have to have the exact wording here.
They said, they said that their suggestion was to run it by them first, but they said as far as like wording and regulations, we can change it up a bit, but it has to meet the overall intent of some of these specifics. And so if y'all want to recommend some changes, I can go back to them and say, hey, would this work or would this still qualify?
Well, you know, I support zero escaping, I'm not trying to be contentious about this, but you know, it may cost people a lot more to do this than what they get from a grant. And I think it'd be nice to see some costs because putting in four inches of mulch in planting beds is not cheap. And, you know, I think these are good things and I think we need to work toward them, but I'd like to know if they're going to get the grant that's going to cover some of these costs because some of these things may be fairly expensive for residents. I mean, some people may do what I did in Pleasant Grove. I just put out Big Rock in my planting strip with some plants with a drip system. But I didn't have to put in four inches of mulch everywhere. That's expensive. Yeah.
I'll just quickly go over a couple of the other things as far as their local scapes grants go. Basically, they have a bunch of example designs of local scapes on their websites that residents can go off of, but they have all the definitions through it too, but it's basically giving like a central open shape or section that would be lawn area. And they also have a maximum for those lawn areas. It's either shall not exceed two hundred fifty square feet or thirty-five percent of the total landscaped area. And then they talk about gathering areas, activity zones, pathways. And then for commercial institutional areas or multifamily specifically, the lawn areas shall not exceed twenty percent of the total landscaped areas outside of active recreation areas. So for example, like Mountain Ridge Park, they wouldn't consider the soccer fields as being some of that lawn area because they consider it usable active recreation area. That's all I have on it. I guess as far as y'all's feedback, if you're wanting to move forward with this, we can try to draft something based on y'all's opinion on certain things and we can work with Central Utah Water and see what they think of it or if they're okay with it. Or if you just don't want to move forward with it because you don't want to regulate it for the residents, then we can go with that as well.
We can choose. I mean, we don't have to have all these elements in our plan, correct? Or do we have to have
To an extent, I
The statement from Central Utah was kind of this set of regulations and this kind of had this two, three-page long list of all of these things as adopt these.
Basically like changing a little bit of wording here and there.
And you know, we'll follow up with them and see now, how much leeway are you really going to give the cities on this? It may be an all or nothing thing. And maybe enough other cities will protest, but.
Yeah, I'd like to understand that because I think it's nice that they have funds and I think we need to do zero escaping. I support that a hundred percent. But I get really nervous when we demand that everybody does it or we don't get any funding at all. And, you know, because I still think people need to have some agency. I think we can just over-regulate things. So I think if individual homeowners want to do this and this is what we recommend, I think it's great. But if somebody wants to landscape their yard different, I think they should still have the right to do that. I just have a hard time just eliminating all agency.
I agree, Scott.
It's kind of like
So Sarah and Scott, so you're recommending not maybe moving forward the grant because of the regulations, it's limiting the, in a sense, the freedom of that property owner to do what they want to do.
Well, I'd like to know more about it before we just say, hey, to get this money, you have to do what we tell you to do.
So what, what do you need more information? Like what information would you need the staff to bring back?
I don't know that I need more information. I think this lays it out pretty well. And there's some parts of it, it makes sense, but other parts of it are really strict. And if we put that into code, I think it really limits.
No, I agree with you. I'm not, I'm not sure I'm willing to say
Yeah, so I don't need any more information, I don't think.
I mean, you've got some regulations here that I think some of our residents go, you took away what we felt were some of our property rights. Now, we say that, we regulate things all the time, what they can do on their property and that. This, this might be a little bit more stretching where they've never felt that before. I mean, you have, where you have to have, you can't have a park strip, it has to be zero scape. There was another one on here, I think so much percentage of it, of your front yard had to be the lawn cannot exceed two hundred fifty square feet or thirty-five percent of the landscape. And that's for some, that would be, you know, pretty stringent, so.
To give you some context, Eagle Mountain recently, the city I live in recently considered this and passed something very similar to what the recommendations where there were some minor tweaks. But they also have some added impetus behind it because of the amount of growth that they are still expecting in that city and the fact that their only water source is an aquifer underneath the city that if they don't be more careful with, they're going to run out of water. And so cities are adopting this. I mean, St. George, you know, those type of cities are going even more extreme. You know, it comes to how much do you want to regulate and how much are you concerned? So this is all about water conservation, right? And limiting, a lot of it is limiting turf, right? Because it soaks up so much water and how much of that is council willing to do again on new homes as well, right? So this isn't, we're not going to force people to tear out their yards, but on new constructions, that's where this would apply.
Well, I think we can discuss it more, but I still think we, I think we have to be careful taking away people's agency because we get kind of a double-edged thing from the government. We want more high density and senior housing, we want to pack more people in here, but then you can't have any landscaping. I, you know, unless it's this. And I just think there's some people are going to have a hard time with that. That's just my opinion.
I guess, do you mind? I'm just going to ask real quick, just because one of our planning commissioners, well, two of them, were, before we got this letter, were planning on coming to the council with either a presentation or a communication item discussing their, their support for more water wise or zero escaping requirements. Like eliminating sod in the park strip was one of their top priorities. And so I'm just letting y'all know that the planning commission has discussed this topic several times and has been wanting to change code.
Where the planning commissioner is trying to propose, do they really have a park strip? I mean, there's some of them that they don't have a park strip, so it doesn't really affect them. They don't have sidewalks, they don't have, I'm just being very honest about it. You know, if I'm thinking about who they might be, I'm going, well, does it affect you at all? Because you don't have a sidewalk or you don't have a park strip. That's not part of your property because the way you have a larger lot, you might have two acres or five acres. So I see why you'd like, I just get nervous. I think, you know, if I bought a home and I was in Highland and I thought, you're really going to be stripped if I can do my front yard. Now, I think some of the zero escaping is beautiful. I think you can do things. But is it their choice or is it the city's mandate? I think we need to be water wise, but we also need to show, be freedom wise too.
Well, yeah, I think we need to educate people, but I don't think you have to demand that they do it. That bothers me.
Do we have to decide this by the end of the year?
We have till January on this?
Yes.
Let's just table it and think about it. Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks.
Is everything okay with that? Okay. Next items, we have down the ten-one-hundred north rebuild.
I know there's a number of them, but we can actually go through them pretty quick. So, Mayor and Council, we've been having some discussions and you'll recall when Featherstone came and then also Verado, we were asked the question, well, when is ten-one-hundred coming? And it is coming very quickly here. We've had some discussions with developers. And as we've looked at the road, the developers are responsible for, per the zoning document, everything that's more than thirty-four feet, so meaning the city is responsible for the first thirty-four feet of the street or where there's, where there's existing asphalt, where there's not existing asphalt developer has to widen, you know, even if the existing is less than thirty-four. Well, what we looked at is we've said, you know, number one, we're not too crazy about the idea of adding the additional asphalt during school time. And number two, you know, what we think makes the most sense is to come and add, kind of rebuild the road together rather than just doing one more patch on that existing road. It's not a terrible road, but it's certainly not in that good of condition. It's had a number of, you know, patches and additions over the years. And so what we're proposing or want to run past the council and what we've run past the developers is to do a combined project where next summer, June first, you know, I'm picking June first because school gets out, you know, day or two before then, but we come and we break ground and rebuild the road all the way through the Lenar portion. Can you go to the next street? So if you look at all of ten-one-hundred, David Weekly and Lenar are the first two-thirds of the street, if you will. Those are the two phases that are moving forward. The ivory phase is the left side of the page. It's the white or unhatched portion of the page. Ivory is moving forward a little slower than the others. And so what we're proposing is that next summer we come and we rebuild ten-one-hundred. The developers paid for the portion they would have paid for anyway. And we rebuild our portion so that we come out with kind of one whole street. The critical question on that is cost. We did ask them for a preliminary, go ahead, oh, sorry, there's, we'll just skip that. Preliminary cost estimate for what our portion would be, it'd be a couple hundred thousand dollars. That estimate is kind of small on the screen, probably is two hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. We don't know that that's exactly the cost, but that's what they gave us as kind of a preliminary number. We just brought it to you to kind of see what your thoughts are, if that's something that makes sense to you. Otherwise, we can just have them add, you know, if you will, their patch of asphalt. We've talked to them that we'll let them go ahead and build the curb and gutter, you know, this fall behind the fence. And that if they want to, they could add kind of a temporary asphalt patch at their cost. You know, if they for some reason want access, but what we didn't want to do is have a big excavated edge that all those high school kids were driving next to, you know, unless somehow we could figure out how to fix it during a break of some sort.
We shouldn't just want a nice complete paved road, a new road.
Yeah.
That's what makes sense.
That's what we're advocating for is, hey, you throw your money in, we'll throw our money in and then together we'll have a nice road. Now, and I want to be clear, that would have a phase line because it would be, you know, for those first two phases. And then when ivory gets there, we assume we'd do the same thing. They were in the room, they're part of the discussion. They may choose to just go ahead, but it's unlikely. They'll probably say, no, we'll spend our money in a couple of years when we get there. But to us, that made sense to just
When did we have that road scheduled to do work on? I mean, were you going to do, I mean, you're talking about redoing the whole road, right?
We're talking about redoing the whole road and so
Was our plan always to redo the whole road or was it more of a silk coat?
I think ours would have been more of a silk coat just because there are other roads that are in worse condition. The thing that moves this forward is to say that, because one thing we don't have is that road doesn't have a very good crown. You know, the drainage doesn't work real great on that road. And so one advantage would be when you're coming and you're redoing this, you could rebuild it to have a, you know, really nice crown and a nice uniform section and be a nice road to drive. There are some sections by the tennis courts that are kind of starting to break up. Overall, what it is, is just kind of a road that's had various additions and widenings and patches and utilities. And like I said, it's not our worst road in town, but it does make a lot of sense to us to just come through and, and, you know, because it is such a highly used road, you know, rebuild it all and have one nice road. But it would mean that we're taking a couple hundred thousand dollars of our FY twenty-four money. Got to think about it, our calendar year twenty-three and FY twenty-four money and we're, you know, earmarking it for this road.
This is a dumb question. I don't want to prolong the meeting, but why doesn't the school district help a little bit on this road that's heavily used by their students? I mean, they don't pay us any property tax, they don't pay us anything.
They charge us property tax.
I know, yeah.
I would, you know, that's a much larger, much larger question, Scott. I mean, you've got all the elementary schools, all the schools, I mean, it's, yeah.
When you're totally rebuild a road, because you need to do that.
Yeah, yeah. I think their answer would be we're a public agency just like you and we got to draw a line in the sand somewhere and that's the line, but, you know.
It seems like their line in the sand is to take seventy-five percent of our property tax.
I'm not, I'm not going to defend, a lot of the city's schools should stand up for themselves. It's a fair question, but it's just not the way it's operating, right? So all we're looking forward from the council right now is, this would take a specific agreement coming back before the council. We'd just really like to get a sense of what your thoughts are. If you think that's a good idea, then we'll keep encouraging things in that direction. If you're like, no, we'd rather use our money on other roads next year, then, you know, we'll kind of let it drop and guide them in the, in the way of just, you know, kind of adding their asphalt patch. Just trying to steer that, steer that plan forward.
Scott kind of given their suggestion, maybe do the, actually do the whole road at the same time? What's the rest of the council feeling?
I would lean towards that, just have a nice road in there that's heavily used.
Yeah, that's fine. I just want to know what, I guess, what roads would then be put off?
I don't have an exact answer.
Specifically sixty-five eighty west?
I don't have
Random road.
List of what would be put off yet by that.
My road that was supposed to be done in seven years now gets moved to nine.
We, but certainly this means that a couple, you know, some would get bumped next year. That's definitely what it would mean. So it's kind of one of those things that's hard to plan for because when was Ridgeview exactly going to come? When were they exactly going to widen the road, et cetera? You know, how do you
It will start being a heavier used road. Once you have all those homes in there, they'll start going out that way too. And stuff all the way to Canal. I mean, so that will start to get
Yeah, if they're going northbound, definitely they will.
Yeah.
Well, is the council okay with them moving forward the project?
Yeah.
Sarah's a yes, Kim's a yes, Tim's a yes, Scott's a yes, I think we're okay with it.
We'll make these others just really quickly, they can be really quick. Just Dry Creek Reconstruction, as the council noted and voted by email, we're rebuilding the road. That is moving forward, is in process right now. Oh, whoops, I forgot, I didn't update the title, sorry. Dry Creek, yeah.
This is the Dry Creek Circle that you
Dry Creek Circle that the council was emailed about. We did have a little bit of a hiccup last weekend. We had intended, it's really hard for us to rebuild the roads and have people water the roads while we're rebuilding them. So we intended last weekend to turn the water back on and it got left off. Well, we thought it was on, but it wasn't on. And so we're working with the residents to make sure that they can water the landscape and catch it back up. But it is actively being rebuilt right now, but we apologize. We thought we had a foolproof system worked out and it wasn't as foolproof.
So all those homes that have been notified that their water is off during the summer, during, the pressure is irrigation during the weekend?
Yeah, what we were doing is we were turning their water off during the road rebuild during the week and we were giving them the weekends to water. And we accidentally left it off last weekend. We tried to turn it on, we thought we had it on, but it wasn't on. And so we've actually, Tason went out, Tason and Brayden went out today and met with every single one of them and talked about how they could water the lawn and not mess us up on the road reconstruction. So we did our best to make up for it today and made, they spent all day meeting with people and trying to make it right. But, but it is actively being rebuilt. But there, you may hear from a few folks that they got, you know, miscommunication on when they could water because that's absolutely what happened.
My tree died and I want the city to pay for it.
There's a couple that have insinuated a few plants have dried, died and things. But we, we've done our best, the minute we figured it out, to get out there and work with them and get them back in water.
So we appreciate your work on this, Andy. Can you just briefly tell me, as you're bringing the sewer out of cottages in the green down the Alpine Highway and they've got all the equipment parked in front of Chad Copier's, what kind of discussion has been going on there? Because we kind of all heard from him.
Yeah, so Chad wanted to add a sewer lateral, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just was curious what was going on there.
Yeah, so Chad came up as contractor because he's got that outbuilding in the back that he'd like to put a bathroom in. And at least that's my understanding, what he wants to do is intended use, I probably shouldn't
So this was his choice?
This was his choice.
Okay.
And, and so he came in and he paid the city another impact and connection fee with the understanding, I think his understanding was that that was all he had to pay. And we went back to him and said, well, no, you have to pay the cost of the actual construction of the lateral. We asked the contractor for the price. They gave it to him. It was a lot more than he was thinking. So I've told Chad that we have not cashed his check yet that he gave us. We've just held it in our cash box and said, you know, Chad, if you want to change your mind, there's no pressure from the city to make a decision either way. Contractor put in the, we call it a Y-connection, but his connection to the sewer line is possible connection and is moving forward and he's, you know, so that he can have a day or two to make a decision on what he wants to do there.
How expensive is the whole thing? I'm just curious because
Well, so our, our impact fees and connection fees, and that's one thing I promised him that I would talk to that I would talk to the council about, were about $3,300. The contractors told him it's $7,500 to add the lateral. That's to get him basically 28 feet of pipe, which puts him, you know, sewer line's approximately the center, so it, it puts him 10 or 15 feet into, into his yard, but they do have to go under a few utilities. They feel like that's a fair price. They've defended that or given him the breakdown of why they feel that's a fair price. Chad's outreach to us has been, do I really need to pay another connection fee, impact fee? It also includes a TSSD impact fee where it's just still the same parcel, you know, because he could just as easily, or not just as easily, but alternatively, he could connect that back building to his existing lateral and not have any city fees in that regard. And that would represent a change in policy of how that's been enforced, but it, you know, it may yet have some merit. And I think it bears discussion with the council on that regard, and we also need to visit the TSSD about that. Because I think charging a connection fee in most cases may be appropriate because we have to go out and spend some time and inspect, but, but if they're not increasing the use that they would otherwise be allowed, does it really need to be another impact fee? I think that's got some merit, you know? In this case, Chad's trying to, and wisely so, trying to seize the opportunity to connect when there's a construction project going on there and maybe...
Well, and they parked all the equipment in front of his house.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's...
I wonder how they get in another house.
Well, and for those of you who took the opportunity to go to Dry Creek Circle, you saw the impact of those people. Right now, as you drive past Chad's and the folks on the North's home, you see the impact on them. And I've asked, you know, the folks that are doing the public involvement as we go into the country club neighborhoods to try and emphasize to the people the type of impact they're going to have. I mean, she went and she visited with the people on the North today and they said, yeah, we got the flyer, but we just didn't realize what this really meant. What was gonna happen, you know? And when you go through and you dig in a new sewer in an existing street, it's a big deal. And it's a lot of equipment and it occupies a lot of space. And it's a major imposition on people's lives, so... But anyway, that's the situation with Chad and kind of where we're at and where things are.
Can you keep us posted on what's going on there?
Yeah, I would, I will. And, you know, I think that you'll probably see an email come out to the council about the question on the fees, you know, and what the thoughts are there. I wanted the chance to sit down with the mayor and kind of run through it administratively with him and then distribute that to the council.
Okay.
Last one, Knight Avenue Signal. I was asked to just give a quick update. UDOT is currently planning a signal for where Knight Avenue intersects with North County Boulevard on the north side of the high school, which is a wonderful thing. And I am very excited about this one. In our preliminary design meeting, we go to the next page, this is just a draft of the signal design from preliminary meeting with UDOT. They've asked us to do a little bit of work on either side street. They don't feel like there's quite enough room for some of the lanes. I don't have a design yet on that. This is just kind of a precursor to what will be coming and we'll be asked to do a little bit of work either on both side streets. So just want to let you know, the good news is, we're gonna get a signal there, which is very welcome for those that, you know, have kids that attend the high school, but it will come with a little bit of expense for us, and I don't know how much that means yet. But happy to answer any questions there, but probably don't have a lot of information yet, so...
Thank you. Anything else?
Not for me.
Okay, let's go through. As we have some future meetings down here, we have our public safety meeting next Wednesday morning at 7:30. We don't have on the schedule here, September 15th at 5:00 p.m., we have our senior dinner, so if you could add that, we'll be out here. Based on, I guess, what the weather will be, we'll be out in the courtyard outside. On the 20th, we have another council meeting. The 27th is planning commission. The 4th, on October 4th, we have a work session and city council meeting is a work session. Aaron, is that...
That's a tentative. We wanted to kind of do a placeholder and see if that's okay with the council. The intention behind that, for a long time, we've been trying to get some cemetery code updates through, and for one reason or another, it hasn't quite gone through, but we felt like that was going to be a longer conversation than just warrant at a council meeting, and so we were asking to see if the council would be open to a six o'clock work session for that.
Is everyone okay if we kind of plan towards six?
Sure.
On the 12th, we'll have another Lone Peak Public Safety. Remember, you might want to write down October 20th is where we were looking to do our fundraiser meeting.
Right.
So, is there anything else before? Now, we do have a closed session that we need to convene. It probably, it says, you know, maybe is the motion, is recess to convene a closed session. It could be for employment, real estate, or other character or professional competency. If anyone can make a motion for that.
I move that we, I move that we recess the regular city council meeting to convene in a closed session, discuss the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual as provided by Utah Code annotated, whatever that says.
Can you also add about employment and also real estate?
And employment and real estate.
Okay.
Without any colors.
Yeah, we're gonna adjourn this meeting.
Hey, I have a motion by Brittany, second by Kim. All in favor?
Aye.
We're now adjourned to closed session.